Good evening, everyone. Happy Spring. It is March twenty twenty five, two thousand twenty four. Time is six thirty three P M. And I will call the Northborough Select Meeting to order. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I chair this board. I have some opening remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty three relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or the recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link listed on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. I will now go around the electronic room and confirm everyone can hear and be heard in the order on my screen. Lisa Muselli.
Here.
Kristen Wixted.
Here.
Julianne Hirsch.
Here.
Laura Zaitin.
Here.
And we have Town Administrator Tim McInerney.
Here.
And Assistant Town Administrator Diana Michael.
Here.
And we have Owen from Northborough Cable with us for technical support. So that concludes the opening remarks. And the first thing we have is we have an executive session to go into and after that. But no earlier than seven o'clock, we will return to public session. Is there a motion?
Mister Chair, I move the board vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty one eighty six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at thirteen Church Street. Due to the chair's determination that a discussion regarding this matter in the open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
Second.
Motion made by Laura seconded by Kristen to go into executive session, and we will return to open session afterwards. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Laura?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are now going to executive session, and we'll see the public when we are concluded. Thank you.
Hi, Jason.
I think we're the only people not on mute on this, or we're not in any session, so.
How are you doing? Nice to have you back in Northborough, by the way.
Oh, well, thanks, John. I know that was you. I think you were very welcoming when I came back the last time, well, the few times we met before, so that made that.
Good to keep continuity and obviously on the CPC stuff, it comes up a lot, so I'm very thankful.
Yeah, so I don't I don't know if we're broadcasting. Maybe we are. I'm gonna put myself back on mute.
Sure thing.
Hello?
Hi John.
Hi Jason.
I think we're the only people not on mute on this or we're not in any session, so.
Nice to have you back in Northborough, by the way.
Oh, thanks, John. I know that was. You, I think you were very welcoming when I came back the last time, well, the few times we met before, so.
Good to, good to keep continuity and obviously on the CPC stuff, it comes up a lot, so very thankful.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know if we're broadcasting, maybe we are. I'm gonna put myself back on mute.
Sure thing.
Hello? Hello, everyone. See, some people have been having fun without us in advance of resuming public session. Wait for all board members and staff to be back in here. And folks here, am I all right?
Yeah.
I see one, two. I see Lisa, Laura, if you're fully there, if you could turn on your camera. So we know you're there. Excellent, thank you. So. Thank you for everyone for being patient on us resuming after executive session. So at 7:19, we'll continue. Returning to open session, first item as always on regular agendas is public comment. If there are any members of the public that are on this Zoom that have comment, whether it be related or unrelated to an item or on our agenda, please feel free to raise your hand and I will, of course, as always, recognize anyone with comments during any agenda item for comments on that specific item. Hope that wasn't too confusing. I don't see any hands up, but again, if there are any public comments, this is the time. Going twice, seeing none, I will conclude public comments. Next up on our agenda are approval of three sets of meeting minutes. Unfortunately, we will have to postpone those once more. I will ask Tim to try to move that along. So we cut up on meeting minutes. That's important for a number of reasons. So unfortunately, we have to delay those again. Next up, we have a community preservation committee chair, John Campbell, presenting on the CPC warrant articles. And I see John Campbell. We also looks like we're joined by some members of the appropriations committee, which is great. I have no problem with you in a little bit early, but because that is advertised for 7:30, we won't start that before 7:30, but you're welcome to hang out with us in the meantime. With that, unless Tim, you had any introductory remarks before recognizing John, I will hand it over to him. John, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, I'm John. Yep, this is John Campbell. I'm from 29 Spruce Hill Drive in Northborough, and I am representing the community preservation committee tonight. Thank you for making time for us at the top of your agenda. I'm going to go through the summary of our recommendations for this year's town meeting and how we arrived at those. I'll try to be brief, but after each article, I'll pause for any questions if you'd like, so please feel free to raise your hand or just butt right in, no trouble at all. The CPC this year had, had a very robust budget consisting of about 1.3 million in unreserved funds or CPA accounts, I should say. Over a million of those is what we call the unreserved account, which has yet to be designated for any of the core areas. And finally, we expected about 820,000 in new FY '25 CPA revenue. So that was our budget to begin, and we entered into the process of, of reviewing the applications that we received. The big one was that we learned of the 432 Whitney Street property becoming available by notice to the town in December. This was after the CPC had already closed its normal application cycle, but we agreed to hear it. And upon hearing the benefits of acquiring this land and the recommendations from the Open Space Committee, Conservation Commission, and the Planning Board, the CPC reviewed it quite carefully and decided also that we should try to have the town acquire this property and keep it from development. It was, it's valued at 1.7 million. That is the purchase price that another buyer was willing to pay. The town has the right of first refusal at that exact number. So we had to find a way where how we could afford. So we had to find a way where how we could afford to buy this. With CPA funding. We did debate a little bit whether we should bond against CPA, which we've done in other cases. But we found that we had enough resources. To acquire the land by using. The CPA monies that we had as well as. CPA funds previously put into conservation account. So in the end, the warrant will go through. Asking for eight hundred and seventeen thousand from the unreserved fund, I'll round off, by the way. Six hundred and sixty four thousand from the conservation fund. And two hundred and eighteen thousand from new revenues. And this brought us up to the full one point. Seven million price. After making those recommendations and approving it. We found through efforts of our town planner, Lori Connors. That the Massachusetts Department of Conservation and Recreation is willing. To give the town two hundred thousand dollars toward. The conservation of the land, which happens to border existing DCR land at the moment. So there was some incentive there. And in addition, they're offering to hold the conservation restriction on the land for no fee. Which is a great bonus for the town as well. So while this is not yet official. We expect that it will come through and that would refund some of the monies back into either CPA reserves or the conservation fund reserves. So we're quite happy about the opportunity. To acquire the land with all of our CPA reserves, no additional town revenue needed, no additional bonding, no additional borrowing. Any questions on this? Hearing none, I'll move on. Next one is a little easier. In the twenty twenty one at our town meeting. We approved through CPA funds, the building of six pickleball courts. At the Ellsworth McAfee property, and I dare say it's one of the most successful and well-used. Programs in recreation that the CPC ever supported. As I think you all know, a somewhat unintended consequence was the noise of the frequent use of the courts that causes to some of. The local residents. So this has come before the Recreation Commission. And some residents have asked for some. Remedy to this. And they found a way through a soundproofing, basically a tarp that's inside the fencing. It still lets some light in, but it's quite effective in reducing the noise. It's been used by. Other communities for the same problem. So we thought as an enhancement to this recreation. Property and an upgrade, it qualifies under CPA. And we voted unanimously to put this on the warrant as well for fifty four thousand dollars. Our next application was from the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. Was asking for a hundred and twenty six thousand eight fifty six in additional funds to add to their ability. To create more affordable housing units in Northborough, which is very important. We're still well under where we should be as a town. And having available affordable housing. The NAHC has been extremely successful in taking CPA revenue and cobbling it with partnerships such as with. Habitat for Humanity and creating a number of affordable housing apartments. In existing properties in town. They're active in a couple of them right now on Boundary Street. And are working on another project to add an additional unit on Boundary Street. So this amount would help them get to their goal. This has been approved at several previous town meetings. Each time that this money is voted by the voters and approved. It goes into a funding agreement whereby the town actually holds the money until the NAHC has a need for it in the project. They provide the invoices and then are paid out. This way, the town retains some control and some monitoring over how the money is used.
John, I think Jason got his hand up after. The the pickleball soundproofing project. Did I see your hand up, Jason?
Oh, yeah, you did. And I just wanted to clarify, just a quick question. You know, we're proofreading the warrant book and so forth. I had my notes. It looks like the application for the pickup ball courts was fifty four thousand five hundred dollars. What is that supposed to be? We have fifty four thousand dollars in the warrant book right now, and we should probably correct that for the record if it's going to be fifty four thousand five hundred.
Yes, my notes are for it to be fifty four five.
So so that that and as well as like the title for the Affordable Housing Reserve, it should be Affordable Housing Corporation. For the next article after that. And again, we're catching some of these typos at the last minute, but.
Oh, I apologize. You're, I'm not reading the warrant and you are. And I think. You're correct. The warrant should be corrected in Article forty one for the soundproofing. And also. Yes, you're right. Article forty two should be corrected. To say funds to the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation.
All right, that's it. I just wanted to catch that before before we moved along.
Thank you for catching it. I did not. I'm referring to the the memo in the select board packet. And there we we have the titles correctly.
I apologize, John, before you go on, could I ask Owen from Northborough Cable to make me co-host so I could recognize folks in the audience if needed? Don't have any hands up at the moment. Thank you, Owen. Looked like we had a hand up a moment ago and then the hand went down, so nothing imminent. John, I actually had a question on four thirty two Whitney. Do you want me to ask that now?
Yes, sure.
I missed that earlier. In the description in the warrant, it talks about, and I think in your memo, it talks about reserving some portion of the land at four thirty two Whitney for affordable housing down the road. I know you have within CPC a funding source for affordable housing. I didn't see that mentioned. So I'm I'm just curious as far as the mechanics of the funds and how that would be. Reserved as opposed to being reserved entirely for conservation. How that works?
Sure, it's a good question. There is an Affordable Housing Reserve that is untouched. In this article, nor in any other at the moment. The Affordable Housing Advocates ask that we try not to touch that reserve. When cobbling together the sources for. The Whitney Street land purchase. So while a portion. Is planned for an affordable housing property, it's a very small portion of the acreage. We're estimating two or less acres. And one reason is that we need to make sure that. The land that we are acquiring for open space, which will have a permanent conservation restriction. That the amount that we're paying does not exceed its appraisal. It so happens that the appraisal just came back. On the property. At remarkably exactly the same one point seven million. That is its proposed purchase price. Because we are using some of our unreserved funds, we have the option to designate later that a portion will be used. For the affordable housing development and yet still not affect. That portion that we use. For the land conservation. And specifically the portion that we use from the conservation fund. Six hundred and sixty four thousand, since it must definitely go toward the open space conservation.
Perfect. That precisely answers my question. Thank you, John.
Amazing. Thanks.
I see a question from Laura.
Hi, John. It's good to see you. I have a quick question about the, for the money that goes from CPC. To Northborough Affordable Housing Court. What does that process look like and how does that number get reconciled?
Process is that after the voters, assuming the voters would approve. Then this additional one twenty six eight fifty six. Would be accounted for in the town as being in the NAHC's budget or reserve, if you will. And then, as I mentioned, each new amount. That's voted by the voters at town meeting. Goes under the same funding agreement that was decided upon at the first time that the NAHC asked for money. In this manner, what they're doing is taking that in a reserve account that can then be used during the ensuing year as a project develops. If they have monies that are unused, each subsequent year, they must be reapproved by a vote of the CPC and the Select Board. To be allowed to remain in the. Reserve, if you will. And then along the way, as a project. Comes to fruition. And monies are needed to be spent, then the NAHC accounts for that, presents the paperwork to the town. And they are awarded that amount out of the reserve. And the process would repeat if there's a project or construction ongoing, if you will.
And then is there a way if people in town wanted to see how that money was spent, would there be a way for them to look at these files? What would, like, how do we know what the money ends up going towards?
Well, the the balances and the projects they're used on is available through the. Town Planning Office at any time or by contacting the NAHC. Rick Leith, as you many know, is is our spokesman. With regard to that and our collaborator with the CPA. Also, at each town meeting, we try to bring up. When projects are built, what the money is used for, what they cost. They're coming to together if they succeeded, if they're occupied and so on. So there's various sources that residents could inquire about, and we would encourage it because, as I said before, they've been exceptionally effective. At using CPA money and partnering with others to create more properties.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the project presented thus far? John, before you move on, the next item I suspect you're going to cover is the First Parish steeple. I live across the street from First Parish Church, so I'm going to recuse myself from that item. I'm going to turn off my camera and microphone. And the the electronic gavel over to Vice Chair Christian Wixted. Sorry for not giving you advance notice about this. And then I'll come back after this item is concluded. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Okay, well, he's correct. The next item I want to talk about is the First Parish. And our committee voted unanimously to repair actually of a structure. Stairs and supports and so on that are under the bell in the top of the steeple due to infiltration of water and so on over the years, even though we previously approved. Exterior renovations. The interior had had not really been done. First Parish came to us last year. And did not really have enough information for the application to be considered complete. And they went back and got better estimates. They also found some grant possibilities that they're going after. And the congregation itself, the church association itself, will be putting in some of the money. But in the end, this is, we think, a very good value for the town. First Parish is regarded as one of our most recognizable historic assets. And it's much more than a church. It's a community center. It's it's used for a variety of uses all year long. And I think a real asset to the community, and it's on that basis that we think it's very much a candidate for CPA funds.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Julianne? Does that mean that the bell will be able? Does that mean the bell will be able to ring again?
Yes, it does.
Oh, excellent.
Yes, it does. We all miss it as well.
Yeah. I didn't even know. I don't think I knew that had a bell. Um, I don't see any hands up. I don't have co-host powers anyway, but but I don't see anybody's. Any attendees trying to ask a question. Did anyone else? Oh, look at that magic. Thank you, Owen. He does pay attention. Does anyone else have any other questions or comments about the steeple? No? Okay. How do we let Mitch know we want him to come back? Oh, there he is.
I was listening. Very good job, Crystal. John, what's next?
Thank you, Mitch. Next is an article for four thousand seven hundred and twenty nine dollars. We are. Adding a historic marker to enhance the historic asset known as the Wetruset Aqueduct Bridge. Very iconic in town. We're actually replacing a marker that is missing. We don't know that it's stolen because we don't know who might have it, but it's definitely missing and needs to be restored. These markers are quite substantial. But this time it will be secured a little better, but we're, and again, it's very informative, and you see many of these in town. I think they're quite valuable in educating residents on the history and the value of our historic assets in town. Any questions? I don't see any.
Lisa, I think you need to unmute Lisa.
I just have one, John. Are they going to put a homing device in this one?
Hi, Lisa.
Hi.
I don't believe a homing device, but let's just say a thicker chain.
A thicker chain, okay.
Anything else? Thank you. The next article we present to the voters is the White Cliffs Bond Payment. As we've done the previous six town meetings, this will be the seventh payment. Of a hundred and seventy six thousand, all told. There will be three more payments. It'll be a little bit less each of the subsequent fiscal years if the voters approve. And then we'll be through with the mortgage, so to speak, for the White Cliffs property itself. I have nothing else to add on White Cliffs, but I'll be happy to take any questions. Hearing none, move on. The last article that we're presenting at town meeting is for the CPA administrative account. As a reminder, by law, we are able to ask for up to five percent of new revenue. And this is, the fund is used for the business of the committee. Primarily to pay pay staff, pay dues to the Community Preservation Coalition. Or evaluate projects that come before us, such as for an appraisal, legal fees and so on. As an example, we're using the administrative fund for expenses associated with the appraisal and. Upcoming legal expenses for the four thirty two Whitney property should the town vote to acquire it. And so this amount this year is forty one thousand dollars. And. Any questions on the administrative fund? We approved this year. We only denied one application, and that was because the Open Space Committee, who had put in an application to add to the conservation fund. In three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, elected instead to rescind the application in favor of. Letting the CPC use the existing conservation fund resources. And other unreserved funds. To. Find a way to acquire four thirty two Whitney. There's quite a bit of value in the property. And in open space conservation trails, connectivity to existing. Conservation lands, connectivity toward the trails. So it met all the open spaces goals. For what the conservation fund is used for. And therefore, they'll come back in future years to replenish some of the conservation money. So I thank you again for giving us the time to tell you and the public what we're coming to town meeting with. And we'll be prepared to present each article. And ask for your support.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much, Sean. Thank you particularly to you and your committee for for the assistance with the four thirty two Whitney purchase. That would be. Extremely challenging, if not impossible, without your help. Really appreciate it.
Well, you're welcome. It's.
Can I ask one question of John?
Yes.
Of course.
So I just want to make sure, I mean, we've been working hard to get all these typos out of the way. It's fifty four thousand five hundred for Article forty one. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then down below that Article forty two. Community Preservation Fund dash Affordable Housing Corporation, not Reserve?
It should say Northborough, it should say Affordable Housing Funds to the Northborough Affordable Housing Corporation. I think you want to be clear that it is funds are being awarded to the NAHC, not to the reserve.
Okay, we have to make those two. Thank you. I just want to make sure I got them right. Thank you.
You're welcome to thank you. And again, we were pleased in the CPC to have the resources for the four thirty two. Remember, it includes quite a bit of state match. Over three million during the course of CPA in Northborough, so it's really been great for the town.
Great. John, thank you very much for joining us tonight. Really appreciate it.
Thank you again.
Unless anybody else has any other questions for John or discussion on this item, we will move it along to the next item on our agenda.
Good evening. Thanks for your support.
Okay, thanks, John. So I will now open the joint public hearing from the point of view of the Select Board for the annual proposed budget for FY twenty twenty five. I see Scott Rogers, Chair of Appropriations Committee. Scott, I don't know if you have a quorum and if you would like to call your committee to order. Or do anything else to that effect?
We do have a quorum, Mr. Chair. So we have George Frankel, Jen's height, Tim Kalen, Jeff Knight. Bob D'Amico would be the only missing member at this moment, so I called to order the Appropriations Committee. The joint budget hearing of March twenty fifth.
Excellent. Thank you for joining us tonight. Excellent. Thank you for for joining us tonight. Tim, do you want to take over at this point and give us a little walkthrough?
I can do that. I'm going to try to share my screen here.
Tim, before you start, just basically following up on a conversation you and I had earlier today, that given that the board and the public is is just now seeing some of this information, bits and pieces we've seen elsewhere prior to today, following the your presentation, you know, the board will have a brief discussion as to possibly continuing this public hearing to another date. Just want to get that out in front of the audience before you start.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the fact that we've been on an accelerated timeline, and there's a lot of people that I want to thank before we start this because the staff here has been incredible. The appropriation committee and the board of selectmen, the patience they've shown for this process, I appreciate it. It's not lost on me. There's a lot of pieces to an $80 million budget that we've put together from January until now. So we we obviously have a balanced budget for you. I'll just ask Mr. Chair if I can get through the whole presentation and all these slides and then ask questions at the end. But I'd also ask you to keep an eye out for Jason's hand if it were to go up. This was a collaborative effort, so I want to make sure Jason can be seen and recognized. So I need you to keep your eyes on me, but keep your eyes on the hand.
Sure, I would I would say rather than me keeping an eye on on tiny little Jason, given the fact that we're sharing your screens, Jason, if you have something to add, just yell out, please.
All right. So the budget process for us and for whatever community should do is to look at revenues. We want to look at revenues. We want to look at state aid. We want to look at local receipts. What's allowed under Prop 2 and 1/2? We want to look at local receipts, state aid, and local taxes. So this slide, from a from a process perspective, I know I mentioned the Appropriations Committee has been with us in lockstep as they've met with department heads and got a feel for their requests and asked their questions. We kind of, you know, legitimized the the process going forward. But the what's allowed under Prop 2 and 1/2, I'm going to cover that in detail. Financial reserves, I'll cover that in detail as well. We are being consistent with your policy to use 500,000 in free cash to really stabilize the tax rate. The OPEB trust is a liability, as you know, for other post-employment benefits. That's the OPEB trust fund that back in 2018, 19, we're required to identify it and do an audit to see what our liability would be for those retirees who leave the employee of the town. And we are going to fund that at 600,000. I'll cover that in more detail. We are planning to contribute 200,000 to the stabilization fund to maintain reserve ratios. And then obviously continue to fund capital projects with with one-time revenues, right? The overall goal of any successful budget or any successful municipality is to use one-time revenues for one-time expenses and not use those one-time revenues for ongoing expenses. So it's just clear that we're consistent with that policy in this particular budget highlight. Now, I know we sent the document today that gives you the line item budget that becomes a document at town meeting. I'll cover that as well when I get through these particular slides. So people might be interested to note that our estimate for new growth next year is 30 million. So all the building permits, whether new construction or renovations or what have you, estimated about $30 million worth of value, which would yield about 428,000 in new tax dollars for the community to use. So we're very much aware of that being one piece of revenue. So the allowance under proposition 2 and 1/2, and then what the new growth estimate is and what that value would yield. Local receipts is up a little bit from basically 300,000 from 498, 96,000 to 4.4 million. Those are local receipts. Those will be your motor vehicle excise tax, for example. And I'll get into more detail on those in a second. State aid, this is an estimate based on the governor's number released in January. It's a modest increase. This always happens that the governor comes out with a number, and then the reconciliation process happens between the House and Senate budgets. And we are going to be conservative. We're going to use the governor's budget because that's what most communities do. And if it gets better, it just gets better, and that'll, once state aid is certified and they pass a budget, and we know what our number is, that'll only reduce the tax burden on the on the community. Again, I covered this to use the 5,000 per yard policy to stabilize the tax rate. That is happening in fiscal '25. So these are the numbers. The New Growth Alliance, Alliance, Allowance is 1,558,000. The the new growth, that $30 million number is 428. The subtotal of that is 1.987. So total new money without accessing excess levy, that's how much you would have. So if you're at your levy limit, which you're not, that's how much you would have. I can tell you that our school department requests eclipses this number, just that one operation. So just I give it context. For all this, you'll, I will, I tried to thematically show what the impact is to taxpayers because I think that's what people think about, and they want to not be impacted severely. It's not the only goal of a municipality, but it's certainly something I've been aware from other positions, and I've kind of brought that mindset here. So it's not lost on me that, you know, somebody has to pay the bill. So we're not just creating a budget just to create a budget and spend a lot of money. So back to to revenues, the governor's budget again, 86,000, very modest increase. And then investment income, because unfortunately, as individuals, we don't enjoy a higher interest rate. As a municipality, as we invest in what's allowed under the law, we do have increased investment income to the tune of about $400,000. So we have significant reserves and local receipts from investment income. So total new revenues, 2.47358. And I think that's important as we go through this. Again, this is just a slide that just breaks out the state aid forecast. And again, if if and when the state passes a budget, we will know exactly what our state aid will be, and whatever additional money that we haven't budgeted in terms of revenue, we'll just go to offset the tax rate. That's all this slide really covers. And then this one just deals with the state aid as a percentage of operating revenues. It's obviously gone down from 14, went up a little bit to 15, or maybe exactly the same. And then where we are estimated and budgeted 24 under the governor's proposal. So that number goes, you know, you never got as high as 10%, maybe early on in the early 2000s you might have, but it goes down significantly. But we thought this was an important thing for the to understand and recognize what that what that number and what that funding source has been as a percentage of the budget. One of the pieces we talked about was, you know, the ability to pay in the population and the demographics, and a lot of people know this stuff. But it's important that people understand some of these items. So you know your population. Your average single-family home, when you set the tax rate back in November, you knew the average family home was valued at 624. The average tax bill was 8,900. Total property value in the community is 4.2 billion, with a B, like that's an important component, especially when we get into later slides. Single tax rate, 1428 per thousand. And then your commercial industrial industrial property compared to your residential. You have 73% residential and 27% community industrial. And this is actually a clickable link that I might go through at the end of this to show you you know, what it means to have a diversified tax base. Not a not a lot of residential communities, or bedroom communities, as they called, has that. You are not that, but probably because of your proximity to 29 and 290, and even 495 to some extent. That's why we enjoy that commercial industrial property tax. I don't want the CIP in this to be confused with our capital improvement plan. It's not the same thing. So I just want to make that clear. It stands for commercial industrial property. So the two different terms that'll be used throughout, but one means this and one means capital. Income tax filed at the Department of Revenue, interestingly enough, is over $1 billion. So the community has some wealth relative to our neighboring communities. We, you know, do fairly well. It's not lost on me, or, you know, even the staff, that there are people in this community that are very vulnerable, and we need to think about those folks as we go through this process. But the income tax will be telling in a minute as we compare against other communities. And Moody's AA1 bond rating, yeah, it doesn't get much better. There's one step above that. Bond ratings are important when you borrow money, obviously. And I only mention it to the folks who might not know, is we have reserves, as we have good fiscal policies, as we have good management. You can go out to bid for those projects and get a lower interest rate, which saves people money. So that's the reason why you want all those things I mentioned to show the bond rating agency that you're doing well and you can pay your debt and get a lower interest rate. I will just jump to the CIP now since I'm hovering over it. And I think it's important to look at the the top right deals with the residential makeup, 3.1 billion, and then commercial industrial property, not CIP, is 1.1 billion. So we know what the tax rate is. We know what the average tax bill is for a residential home. But I just, I asked the assessor to put this together because it's important not to, most communities want to grow the community industrial property, which given the right type of development, we probably want to grow ours. But the loss of a reduction of 5% would would mean an increase to the average single-family home of 12231. So those are obviously today's dollars, today's values. But just to give an idea, we need to do a better job of attracting and retaining, in particular, commercial investment and commercial property in the in the town. This one is at 10%, obviously doubles the number. So I just wanted to show what happens to that number. Community I worked for in the past unfortunately had a 90-10 split, so the residential units bore 90% of the the burden for schools and for trash and public safety and so forth. So I guess I'm trying to make clear that it's, we're in a fortunate spot, even though some of the troubles that come out of having commercial industrial property tax, it it may be well worth it to not burden the residents as a result. So anyways, I mean, overall, I mean, my job is to help keep that in place and grow business where I can and as time allows. And it's not inconsistent with what we talked about during the interview process back in December. So I just bring that up. I might have spent too much time on it. I apologize. Surrounding communities, again, we want to compare ourselves in terms of service levels and ability to pay and what the average single-family tax bill is. And this just lays out the municipalities, the population, their values of the average single-family tax of value, and then their per capita income. Again, we are pretty good compared to our peers. And the tax bill and then the tax effort. So the next slide will show you that I hope it's the next one. This one just shows you the tax effort in Northborough relating to other communities, and we're in the middle. We're lower than the average of 14.48%. That's kind of the average. So for every dollar these folks file an income tax, well, I mentioned the 1.1 billion for the town. For us or for Northborough, you know, 13 cents goes to taxes and pay for the operation of the community, schools, public safety, roads, everything. So you can see where Southborough has a lot more wealth for a smaller community. So you have three below us and four above us in terms of their community's tax effort and how much they spend per dollar per capita. It's just an interesting exercise just to make sure we're not far in excess of where other communities are relative to their ability to pay and the fact that they do pay for the municipal budget, including education. So obviously, all of this will be, you know, once I create a budget document, these, all these slides go into that back piece, but so these are available and they'll be available. Hopefully tomorrow I can put them on the the web as well. I need water, so you'll have to excuse me. This will tie back to the sheet that we sent out. This is so hard to do this not in person, but we emailed the board and put an amendment to the packet for the the revenue expenditure summary. So this will tie back to that in a minute. So property taxes, this is your levy capacity unused at the beginning of the fiscal year was 4, 4,46,000. So you had 4 million in excess levy capacity. To balance this budget, we propose to use 1.9, and I'll get into those details in a moment. And so your remaining is 2, 2,136,956. And other pieces of this that relate back to Article 4, these will be transfers to underwrite town departments. So the fire department revolving is from your EMS fees, 377 861, cable receipts reserve, 300,000, recreation, 100,000, and then all other estimated. Jason covered these with me today. And Jason, can you talk about those? I know there's some health insurance related items for reimbursement from the federal government in this number. Can you just cover that real quick?
Yeah, so if if anybody wanted to see exactly what makes up this number, it's it's what gets transferred in in Article 4, the town's consolidated budget article. I don't know if everybody remembers, but we'd usually do a whole list of transfer from, transfer to. And I have a draft warrant right here, so I'll just list some of those off for everybody if I get back to the beginning of it.
Jason, you want me to wait for you or you want me to go?
Yeah, 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 yeah. I'll read I'll read some of these off. So again, of that amount, $14,250 from cemetery sale lots, $25,842 from cemetery trust income, $454 from debt exclusion premium reserve, $2,982 from the DPU transportation fund. Those are our share of Uber fees, Uber ride sharing fees, Uber and Lyft fees that come to the town. We get, I believe, 10 cents for every ride that originates here in Northborough. Conservation commissions fees are $175. Animal control revolving, those are dog licenses, $30,600. And then lastly, beyond the ones that are listed here, Medicare Part D subsidy. Those are subsidies we get from the federal government for offering qualifying health insurance to retirees. So we file an application and we get these reimbursements from the federal government and where we have $84,632 available to transfer into the general fund budget. So that those make up all of the 158, 935.
Jason, which page of the warrant are you on?
Uh, page, page six.
Page six. So those items you just read off are from page six?
Correct, yeah.
All right, I'm going to continue on. So the proposed budget, this document encapsulates everything we're going to spend money on. Probably the most important is to look at the 24 budget, which you approved just 10 months ago, and the proposed 25, the variance, which is the dollar difference, and then we have the percent difference. It's just informational just to see these items. You know, and I'm going to break down these in more detail in the next couple of slides, but that's the overall picture of the operating budget. So this is how it breaks out. If you were to put it in a pie chart of where the tax dollars go from an operational standpoint. So I'll just leave that up for a second. You can just look at insurance and benefits. That 13.6 is something that communities struggle with all the time to to reduce, and we did this year because originally we were looking at a 10% increase in health insurance, which is never an easy thing to take, and I'll cover that in one second. never an easy thing to take, and I'll cover that in one second as well. So this slide depicts school department, I think, started their budget process much earlier than we did, and I think they actually went through their hearing process and approval process. Probably as I was entering the door here in early, late, mid-December. So you have K through eight at a three point nine percent increase, which equals one million one hundred eighteen thousand. You have, uh, Dunkland, which is seven, seven point nine seven, at one point one two one million, and then Assabat at a hundred and seven thousand. So the total request, if you remember the number we had up top, I think it was two million four. I won't go back up there. But that, again, that, that's eclipsed of what's allowed on the two and a half annual new growth by just this one particular component of the budget. This bottom blue number, this was, um, something I assumed and maybe wrongly. That people might want to see what happens to the average single family tax bill as a result of adding things into the budget. So that three forty-four is what the increase would be in the average single family tax bill. Because or if an affirmative vote on the proposal for the budget at town meeting occurs, this is what the increase would be, just for that portion, just so we're clear. And then fixed costs that we just can't control. I mean, we could control health insurance if we didn't have employees. If we don't have employees, we can't really do a lot of work. Worcester County Retirement Assessment, WRRS, so that's the retirement assessment of three hundred and twelve thousand. Health insurance at two seventy-one, eight thirty. Solid waste subsidy. I'll have to spend some more time on that with you just to tell you that we're losing our vendor. We're going hopefully with a new vendor for July one. Did, did pretty much match this number from a, we had Republic, we had a, a quote to go with another trash hauler that increased this subsidy to two fifty-one. We worked hard to get another vendor which could match this number, and that's the one we're going to propose to you separate then. For this meeting, we don't have to have that discussion, but just know that it was going up either way, unfortunately. And then all other fixed costs of one oh one. And so again, in the brackets to the right in blue, I wanted to show just what these fixed costs do to the single family home in terms of increases of those items. So that's what the one thirty-eight is. That's what nine thirty-eight represents, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars under the single family average tax book. So the total town requests were over eleven and a half percent, give or take. Obviously, we, we had to balance between people's ability to pay, the need of the requests, and then the willing, I guess that's the same thing. So the, the need and the willingness for people to pay. We ended up making a request of a million seven thousand above where we are in fiscal twenty-four. So you add those two things together, the fixed cost and then the requests from departments, which again, I keep saying I'll get into it. I will tell you exactly where these come from. Total two eighty-two is the average impact to the single family household. And I'll subtotal these out again in another slide. So the new positions in twenty-five, which drive part of the number up here, are in detail here. So the police department made a request. I think they asked for two patrolmen and one lieutenant. I think again, based on need and elasticity to pay, we ended up with one additional patrol officer dropping a current sergeant, which I think he was six, and adding a lieutenant. So seventy-eight eight for the patrol officer. And then the delta between the sergeant and the lieutenant's pay is twenty-four oh eighty-three. So that's what that represents. The town accountant, as I walked in the store to take this job, we had him ask very nicely for Jason to come back. But the board was talking about a town accountant's position. They could do a lot of things from performance measures with contracts to make sure we're in compliance with contracts to creating a, a, not a better budget model. I think we have a good budget model. We just don't have a lot of bodies on to create, you know, a, a great budget document. I know we're under a compressed timeframe too, but there's a lot of things that go into the town accountant piece in that request. And obviously Jason's on, and I've actually asked staff to be on standby to answer particular questions by the board for these requests, but let me just go through them if you want to ask them. If we can just stay to the end, that'd be great. Uh, so that's the town accountant number. The town clerk, uh, is looking, they have two people currently. It's just hard, given the elections that you have and the scrutiny that the town clerk's office is under, to provide the level of service and care that's needed for absentee ballots, mail-in ballots, and day of elections and a whole host of other things from marriages to, uh, birth and death certificates. So that's what that request is, twenty-five thousand oh eighty-three. And then DPW, um, you guys might have witnessed this during the process of hiring someone for this job. You, we rely, I rely on DPW almost more than any other department, uh, except for finance right now. There, therefore, a lot of things from facility management and maintenance and the buildings you've taken on and getting insurance and responding to meeting minutes and to committees. This is, I, I think, easily justifiable, and it's a thirty-three thousand dollar ask from the general fund because obviously fifty percent of it of this person's time will be covered by the enterprise fund. Again, Scott's on someplace in the, in the background here. The assistant library director, uh, this is a position that was cut back, I think in two thousand eight, two thousand nine due to budget considerations. It never brought back, and the work they do in the library is just amazing from the hours. They are there to the, the books, the programming. I, I had Jen do an analysis of, you know, what they provide for programming and they by, by far exceeded everybody else. So my, every other community that has a library, let me make that perfectly clear. People will get burnt out. These service levels cannot, I mean, I want them to maintain. I want them to continue, but I think it's just, it's not realistic to keep asking people to provide that service for a long duration without burnout and without any upward mobility. And I think, you know, having, building a team that has a deeper bench than what we have now for, in terms of succession planning, I think is important as well. So it's something that I, you know, we've heard in different circles of what we want to have, and that's why these positions are listed here. The increased library assistant hours, uh, Jen's probably going to do a better job, but I, I do believe you were sharing this cost with the trustees, um, to, to get increased hours and to be open on, I think, Monday morning versus noon time, opening at nine. So there's, there's some enhanced service level here as well. And then of course, you know, we don't know if people on this list will take health insurance or not, but we have to budget for them. So of the four point five FTEs, uh, it's an annual cost if they took, I think, the, the family plan, the most expensive plan would be ninety-six thousand nine sixty-five, which I realize that is a big number. I will tell you that again, the sixty-eight dollars down the bottom is what the average annual single family taxpayer household would pay as a result of adding these positions. So I just want to make it clear while I know it's a big number. I think that's why you're a part of a great community because you, you, you know what you value and you will pay dollars for those particular items, and that's what the dollar is. So I thought I would just be completely transparent in telling you that upfront what your costs are. So I, this is, I'm just restating everything we just covered. So this six five five, six ninety-one is different than the first slide because that's this fiscal year. The six hundred fifty-five thousand is next fiscal year, and it's an estimate based on, you know, how, how this community grows for value. So the fixed costs make up one point five percent or a hundred and thirty-eight dollars of that particular increase. The school budget makes up three hundred and forty-six dollars. The town department requests make up a hundred and forty-eight dollars. And then there's new revenue and other effects that reduce that overall tax bill by eighteen dollars. So as presented, it's a six point eight percent increase, which includes everything we've talked about. All those positions, everything in the school department, all those fixed costs are six hundred and fourteen dollars, the averages. So your average single family tax bill will go to eighty-nine, from eighty-nine seventeen to ninety-five thirty-one.
Sorry to, uh, to interrupt. Uh, we've got at least one hand up. Do you prefer us to still wait until the end or do you want to?
But I could, but I want them to make sure that they remember their question. I will, I'll, I'll take, I just want to, I have a couple more to go. In terms of free cash in the capital plan, I just want to cover this quickly and the status of reserves for the community. So your free cash was certified last year at three point five million. Your proposed capital plan that uses free cash, the plan is a lot more expensive than two point one million. We'll cover that. The operating budget, we talked about using five hundred thousand to stabilize the tax rate. The appropriation reserve for the appropriation committee, one seventy-five. And then the, the transfer to stabilization is two hundred thousand. Your remaining of free cash, if you did this, would be five hundred thousand. I believe that's consistent with the policy, financial policy that the community has on the books. So the status of reserves, um, to issue a stabilization fund itself has five million six hundred seventy-four thousand six ninety. And with the free cash, you add that five hundred thousand and you get to six three. And your policy is to be between five, five and ten percent of your budget that you have in reserves. Now, this number of six point three does not include your excess levy because it's not body of reserves, even though it's available and liquid should town meeting want to allocate those funds. So I just wanted to cover that quickly. A lot of your capital plan, and I can ask the chair this, we're, we're going to go through the warrant. I can cover this stuff at that point, or I can go, go through it now.
Well, you, uh, keep going and we'll save our questions.
All right, I'm gonna, I, I, I don't have this document. This is, this is bad. I don't have the document I sent to you all today. Actually, maybe, Jason, can you, do you have this revenue and expenses summary for fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five that we sent to the board today? I know I can't hold it up, but.
I, I believe so.
All right, do you, do you mind, uh, can you share your screen for a couple of minutes? Because I think it's important that even though the board has this general sense of everything, this shows, you know, what the Board of Selectmen, Town Administration, if you can bring that, that page up. And if you, actually, if you could walk them through those, I have notes on all these, but I'm, uh, I'm parched and need to drink some water. But I don't know, I don't know if you could cover those items.
Yeah, sure. I mean, this is, uh, this slide here is focused on the, the capital plan and the, the capital articles. Let me see if I can.
Yeah, Jason, I, I can, I can still cover this one. I want to go to the, the actual document that shows this fiscal year revised. You know, the, the sheet that earlier today, uh, that would actually become the, the, the town meeting document.
Oh, I'm sure.
I know, I'm putting you under the.
All right, yeah, yeah, no, no problem. Um, let me just, uh, it's saying that I can't share my screen, but, um, okay, here we go.
I stopped, so you should be able to.
Let me just try to, um.
Mitch, why he's pulling it up? Do you want to take that? If there's one question, I can do that way.
Sure, Laura?
Thank you. I noticed on your personnel, um, list of new positions, we didn't have, or I don't know if it's in there for the new potential director for Health Human Services that we've spoken about in our last meeting. Is that a separate position or what would that look like?
Because it's, it's in your, um, Article thirty-seven, thirty-eight, cover that as a merger. You're actually going to be down one if you were to vote for that. You'd be down one. So you're not adding anything new. And again, the budget difference there is, um, three thousand forty-two dollar difference increase from this year to next year. We can, we can go through that later on because we got to split that article up into two things.
I remember. Okay, thank you.
Jason, I just see a blank screen, Bill.
All right, well, I'm, I'm trying.
All right, no, I didn't, I didn't know if you knew what we saw.
Let's see, I, I just have this in Excel. I'm just trying to open the Excel file that, uh, that, that, that the file was based on. So let me, um, try again. It says that I'm sharing my screen, but I'm not sure what's going on.
You are, but it's not, it's, it's not anything. I can try to find it.
Am I have that, um, that four-page sheet that, that you sent? And I'm, but I'm looking for, I think you said there was a detail of capital articles?
No, I was gonna, capital I can cover during the, the, the warrant. So I thought it would be easier.
Do you want me to share my screen? Would that, would that be helpful?
Yeah, it'll be quicker.
PDF that you sent.
Yes, please. How do I get that back?
Okay, sure.
Okay, so. Yeah, Zoom, Zoom isn't cooperating with me right now.
Jason, if you have a button top right, just if it says stop sharing, there you go.
Yeah, it was moving around on my screens.
Okay, um, hopefully you see this spreadsheet here. Everyone see that all right?
Yes, I do.
Yep, that's.
All right, hopefully my sound isn't breaking up. Um, Tim, where would you like me to scroll within this?
Just go to the second page?
All right, I apologize. I'm now having some audio difficulties. Could you repeat that where you'd like me to?
Second, second page, second page?
Right here?
Nope, one more. There you go. And I can't expand this view for some reason, so that's kind of driving me crazy.
Okay, I've got this pretty well zoomed in. I can zoom it out, but then everything's a little bit, it's going to be a little smaller to people. But, uh, yeah, that's got all the data. Is that good?
I think so. I've just lost my screen. I'm very sorry.
We, we, we wanted to have a hybrid meeting tonight. This would have been different if, if we could have had, so that's, such is where we are.
So just, I'll, I'll, I'll start us off, Jason, with this, because this, this is a substantive changes kind of broken down from what I just presented. So inside the selectmen's number, for example, it should be select board. I only realized that right now. So the difference in this, uh, you know, the five thousand six fifty number is basically salary for, for next fiscal year, uh, administration. Uh, I believe, and I, I have to do more research on this. I don't, I don't think the salary compensation was exact between the predecessor and myself, but I do think some of the compensation was covered in expense lines and is now all in the salary line. I think that's accurate. So that's what that increase is. So that's what that fifteen-five-two-five is. If you go down to town hall office supplies, uh, the increase of ten thousand six ninety as a result of, I guess you didn't carry enough paper nor enough postage in fiscal twenty-four. And so we made an adjustment there to carry that adequately. Under finance, the town accountant, this harkens back to the position for town accountant under the presentation. The other two numbers on the Board of Assessors and Treasurer, while they're both, uh, under Jason's Finance Department, those are contractual, not contractual, but existing employee salaries and wages increases. The, um, assessor has appraisal services to make sure we appraise, uh, personal property and uh, commercial industrial property adequately. So I think there's sixteen thousand of that numbers in there. And then upgrade to the Canvas system, which is his software system that allows him to do mass appraisals to get the number for new growth and to get the number to set the tax rate. So that's what those two numbers are. The treasurer number for twenty-seven, I talked about this at the last meeting about self. what those two numbers are. The treasurer number for 27, I talked about this at the last meeting about self-service for, uh, request for time off for tracking, uh, comp time, sick time, vacation time, uh, allowing employees not to get a paper check and allowing them to log on to a portal that they can, it'll be secure, just like a banking app, that they can look at their particular accrued time or their pay stub or their W2s, automate changes to, uh, health insurance selections provided it's open enrollment or if they have a qualifying event. That'll all be able to done online. So it'll reduce time for them to come here during the day and reduce time for my staff to interact with them to, to help them make those changes to whether they have a deduction code or had a child or whatever it might be, that'll be automated. And I think that number inside that 27, 643 is 10 or 11,000. But it's offset by not having, I guess you may not know this, we mail checks to folks. So all of the staff on a bi-weekly basis get a mail check. We would eliminate that. Um, and we would go to the system along with obviously direct deposit. Most people don't get a check. They do get direct deposit. So MISGIS, this 171 is a result of combination of things, but I think Mike Gallagher was the interim. And I think he gave direction to the staff to roll up out of police and the fire department, their MISGIS costs that they have in their operating budget now and move those for transparency sake, trackability, just having the guy in charge of IT know what those departments are purchasing and what they cost. So that's what that increased. It, it is a huge number, but it's from other, from other departments for the most part. Uh, I think there's some refresh in there for PCs and for managed services, but uh, the lump, the majority of that 171 is from two different departments rolling their, their cost into the MISGIS. From a philosophical standpoint, it makes sense and that's why we continue to do it. Under the town clerk, uh, we covered this. This is, there's two things in this number. There's a, um, a part-time person, obviously wage increases. Jason, can you help me with the, the second piece of this? Cause I know the 19.
I, I think it's the number of elections that are happening. I mean, there's, there's the, there's the part-time person that's included within that number, but there's also the, the number of elections that they're certainly covering.
Okay.
The variable part of their, their budget.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't have that note, so thank you for that. Um, Personnel Board, uh, these are, these cover advertising, supply costs, CMR PC assessment and, uh, actually, Jason, do you have any other data on that 35?
On, on the Personnel Board? That?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it said planning. I am sorry, I'm looking at this thing. So what's inside that number? Since you're there, tell us what's inside that number.
Yeah, the Personnel Board is where we consolidate all of the, um, the, the, the raises that are due to employees under the Personnel Bylaw. So they get consolidated here until performance evaluations are done and then subject to the Personnel Bylaw, there's a, a merit raise process where people move through the grades, the, the established, um, classifications and grades that are, are in the Personnel Bylaw. So, um, that, that's where that gets carried in the Personnel Board. And, um, all the contracts are settled this year. So in other years where contracts are unsettled, a lot of times this number will be much higher that, that's carried there, but that's, that's simply for, for transferring money to budgets after, um, raises are determined.
Thank you for that. Um, can you go to the police one? I know that there's a body in there for over 100,000 or two adjustments and the rest is just contractual, contractual for patrol officers?
Yeah, contractual services and, um, the, the, there's the increase for the, uh, the, the lieutenant position costs more than the, than the sergeant position that it's replacing. So there is a, a reduction of a sergeant and an increase of a lieutenant. So there was, um, an impact there related to that. And there's the additional position as well.
Okay. Um, I don't know, Mitch, can you scroll down beyond public safety? I have, the fire is a, you know, a big number, 66,000, but there's just, it's, it's modest overall for a 2.73% increase, but it covers their contractual agreements as well.
Tim, um, we have one, one hand up from a board member. Would you mind interruption or do you want to finish?
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Lisa?
Uh, thanks. Um, I have a question where you had taken out some of the, I think you said police and fire and put it into the MISGIS amount?
Correct.
In the, is there also, um, uh, like a, 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 a second set of books, so to speak, that show that amount actually being part of what the police and fire, um, budgets include, even though, and even though we're taking it out and putting into MIS, isn't there a way to bring it back to see what the actual department in total, um, is? I'm making my question correct.
Yeah, I, I can give you, the subtotal from both departments was 112,000. Um, I don't have the breakout. I don't know, Jason, if you have. I know it was more from police, less from fire, but it was 112,500. So those numbers would have been reduced out of their budgets, but they still had growth inside their.
I'll, I'll say one thing is what, what's difficult to understand is I don't always follow everything related to, I'm, I'm, I am good with computers, but I don't understand everything from an institutional perspective with cybersecurity and, and everything, but I understand a lot of these costs have gone up as a result of cybersecurity and, um, making sure that our redundancies are in place. And from what I understand, it's not a straight line um, discussion there that, that is just replacing one budget for another, but the expenses were around $60,000, um, in FY24. So those two amounts are included in the fire and police, and I think that those have escalated to 112,000 dollars. So we took a $60,000 expense out of police and fire and, um, MIS increased 112 as a result of that. So it's, again, it's not a straight line or simple explanation.
Well, we could build a crosswalk from, you know, that 120, that 115 or you know, how, where it came out of police and fire and how it bade its way in, and then talk about the escalator on top of that. So we can task them with that crosswalk, if you will.
Right, because you could put it as a negative, you know, negative figure underneath and a positive figure above to show that total.
Within that line item, yes.
Okay, thanks.
But I, let me just, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make sure we do that. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, Mitch, you wanna scroll down, uh, maybe the next page?
Sure. There you go.
So highway admin, we talked about this a little bit on the previous page for a, a, additional staff. Um, construction costs and maintenance, you're gonna continue to have a robust as best you can fixing your roads and keeping them at a, um, I wanna say 86, but I don't think it's an 86 pavement management index. I think it's a little lower than that. But you have a number of funds that go into, uh, roadway repair, replacement, construction activity from chapter 90 to this to, um, to free cash. So that's what helps you maintain, uh, your numbers in terms of your pavement management index. Again, that's obviously an expertise for Scott. And then the library, we covered that. That's another big number. So when that jumps out at you, that is the, uh, the additional staff and the increased hours for the part-time person. And then health insurance, we covered this during the slide presentation of increase of 271, 830. And then OPEB, I just think it's important, um, to note a couple of things. You have a liability for OPEB. I think it's 31 million in liability, and I don't know if I can if I wanna do that now. Yeah, you know what? Actually, this yeah, can I reshare my screen again?
Sure.
Uh, I need to find a way to do that. So if I was gonna conclude, um, you know, oh, what the heck? Am I still on? Hello, anybody?
Yeah, you're still, thank.
All right. It, uh, it told me I was no longer connected. Okay. So you can see that screen? I cannot, I cannot hear.
I don't see your screen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see your screen, Tim.
Huh. Let me try something different. Okay, here you guys are, which is great. Share screen.
Yeah, I would say it. Thank you.
Did you share it now? All right.
Yes.
What are you doing? Still good? All right. You can see it? Okay. So the OPEB, I was starting to say I got, I got us off by a million bucks. 32.5 is the liability. The trust fund has 6.1 as of 4/29/24. So you're, you're trying to create enough money to start to use earned interest or excess in this account sometime in the future to pay down for those, uh, cause you're paying as you go now and you're also saving. So I just, it may need more explanation, certainly to the general public of carrying a liability that big. Um, but I know the group on this understand that. And then obviously under this budget proposal, we're funding stabilization and we're funding a capital plan. So that's where I would have ended if I didn't get sidetracked by that secondary document. And then questions, I guess? The board, from the board or anybody else?
Yeah, somebody, since we have a good, a good number of people here, um, if member of either board has any questions, if you could raise your hand just to make sure that I see you. Uh, and then we'll open it up to the public after we go through some questions from, uh, those on the meeting. Uh, Lisa?
Um, just to go back a little bit, a slide, two slides before this one, where you were talking about the assistant or the, uh, the administrative assistant for DPW?
Yeah.
Are you also including, um, the, the new assistant, um, director? Is that also?
That's a vacant, that's a vacant position as of right now, but it's carried forward into fiscal 25.
So it doesn't?
Already in your system.
Okay, so at what point does that then come back to us? If it's not filled in six months? Does that just sit in a fund or what happens with that?
Uh, the money would stay within that, that account inside of DPW, and I can't imagine it, it wouldn't go filled, but we're, we're trying to actively pursue, uh, you know, through the advertising process and interviewing process. I think Scott has a couple of leads on some, some good folks that can fill that spot. So what'll happen is if it doesn't get filled, it'll just go to fund balance, which will turn into free cash.
Okay.
Then you, then you can reallocate any, any ways as you fit.
Great, thanks. I suppose I could ask another question since.
I apologize, I seem to be having some audio difficulties, so I, everyone's frozen to me. Um, if anyone has any questions, I would say at this point, just. Sure, go ahead.
Tim, Tim, could you, I love what you've done with the, the blue, um, number that's added, adding up the value to your tax dollar? Do you have a slide that shows everything to the, to that 600 amount? Yes. Do you have all of those things lined up so that you can see where that is?
Different than what's on the slide right now?
Yeah, yeah, because, well, fixed cost 138. So basically what you're doing, you know, my accounting brain is saying, okay, usually there's a, like a list and there's a subtotal and a list and a subtotal. And it just shows you how that all plays out together. But this takes all of that as you add the slides together, what you're saying, so that if it was like $68 on one thing plus 143, that's where you'd come up with the next.
Yeah, I think we, we started with the premise of if we get to 6.8%, we started higher than that. We know that that's gonna be $614. And then I wanted to know, well, what a fixed cost as a percentage of that 614? What's the school department's request as a part of the 614? And what's the department request part of the 614? And so at 138, 346, 148. Jason, you, you, can you take on that point two one reduction of $18 so they understand why, why it doesn't equal more than 416?
Well, I, I just think one important note, I mean, we, we talked about it briefly for a second, but the average single-family home value of 655, 691, we, we've looked at some sales data with the assessor and that, that takes into account a 5% increase in single-family home values. So that, that's built into these projections. Um, the reduction is, um, due to, um, just these long debt schedules for debt-excluded projects like the Lincoln Street School and the, the, um, the library and senior center projects that, that have been on the books for a really long time. And every year they incrementally go down just a little bit. So there is a little bit of relief built into the, built into, not everything goes up every year. So there is a declining debt schedule for some of those things. And that's really what the, the $18 is made up of as, as well as the, um, the, the, um, the $400,000 in new revenue we, we put into the, the, the budget this year for, for investment income.
Okay. And you said you added, you added 5% to the home values? Is that coming up? That's, so that's gonna be in addition?
No, that, that's, that's built into the model, that the 5% increase.
And that's a yearly increase? Until they do a reassessment?
No, I mean, every, every year we do the, in, in order for us to set our tax rate every fall, we, we have a, a five-year cycle where there's a, a revaluation every, every five years. Um, every year we do have to, um, do market adjustments in order to kind of stay in line with those five-year revaluations. So there's, um, basically a, a revale every year and, you know, we do and a, a market adjustment every year to be, be based on sales and so forth. So during the classification hearing, there's a lot of, uh, discussion talked about, about the statistics and so forth. Um, but yeah, we, we've looked at sales data with the assessors pretty closely so that it's, it seems likely that, I mean, everybody knows how the real estate market is, but the, it seems likely that there'd be another market adjustment of about 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, uh, questions from member of either committee? Julian?
Um, yeah, so on, on the budget summary, town general fund budget summary that we got, page two of three, it says, under public works, it says highway construction and maintenance, um, and in that list of projects, there's nothing about sidewalks. Does that mean we're not doing any sidewalks? Because that's been a big, um, you know, a big ask with master plan and master plan implementation.
Uh, as far as I know, there, we're looking at doing sidewalks. Uh, I can give you just by way of example, out by the church at the, across the street from Cumberland Farms, there's a, there's a space there that needs to be engineered and designed. And then, you know, that would be one that would be on the list. I don't know where it breaks out in terms of, uh, where he has it programmed and, and when, but we, obviously we have to, we have to survey to see if it's our property. If it's not our property, we need to get permission to put the sidewalk in somebody's private land to have a continuous loop from, obviously, the, um, housing authority down to the light and then across the street to Cumberland Farms. So just by way of example, that's one that he and I have talked about. he, he and I have talked about, I've talked to the planner about it. It's that one that I know is on the list, but I don't, I don't know what other ones in particular. But I know that there on the list is a separate warrant article that deals with drainage and sidewalks. That, that augments the operational budget here. So that warrant can't just cover that, it's gonna have to be this budget, chapter ninety and the warrant article. So the combination of those three things, you do sidewalks and you do road improvements and you do drainage improvements.
Well, I, I am worried about that warrant article because I think it, it, it says something about um, those projects will be done unless there's like emergencies or something like that, so I guess we'll get to the warrant later, but so as far as you know, that's little sidewalk on, I think it's Hudson Street that you're talking about?
Yes.
That's the only one that's.
That's, that's, that's the only one I've called attention to and had direct, you know, enthusiasm about because I tried to walk there.
Um, okay, so a- also under, under Public Works, trees, seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars. Is that tree, tree replaced?
It'll probably be removal of trees. Uh, I know that Scott and I are working on a policy for the board. Uh, and I know, I think you all might have some ideas on policy too for replacement of trees as they come down in the public right of way.
Scott just raised his hand, so I'm bringing him in to uh, help with, with that question, the sidewalk one also.
Oh, great, thank you.
Hello, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, that's okay, Tim, you want me to cover a little bit of the sidewalk trees? Okay. Yep, so um, uh, as you're aware, we're a complete streets community. Uh, this board approved the prioritization plan that went to the Mass DOT who subsequently approved it as well. Um, there is a list of priority sidewalks in that plan for improvements. Um, as well as some other mobility improvements like bike lanes and the such. Uh, the primary focus through discussions with the town planner has been to utilize the relatively limited complete streets funds, uh, five hundred thousand dollars over a four-year period. Uh, to address some of the downtown revitalization components that um, the master plant implementation committee has been talking about. Uh, pedestrian-friendly improvements along Blake Street, the sidewalk segment that Tim is referring to on Hudson Street. That's, that's been the focus, I know, for the complete streets funding. The uh, as part of a complete streets community, we are committed to rebuilding the sidewalks adjacent to roadways when we rebuild those roadways. You're familiar that we did that work on Warren Drive and Stratton Way our first year as a complete streets community. Um, last year we did the um, Edmunds Way as well. So we are committed to doing sidewalks in conjunction with our roadway when we do full reconstruction of a roadway. Um, a mill and overlay or a surface treatment um, does not warrant the sidewalk reconstruction, but um, when we do full construction, we are committed to doing that. Julianne, you mentioned specifically the uh, warrant, the capital item on the uh, warrant article for drain, uh, systematic drainage and sidewalk improvements. Pending any um, emergency needs, the expectation is that that, those funds will begin the reconstruction of drainage failures up on the Aspet Hill neighborhood. Um, that's been presented to this board several times. I've worked with that community over several years and unfortunately, we've had some culvert failures over the years that have postponed that work. Uh, but the expectation is that we'll allocate that um, capital project to Aspet Hill so that next year we can pave that section that we did those drainage improvements to. I, I discussed that previously here. Um, and every other year program, it's about nine hundred thousand dollars with a drainage repair up there and likely a million dollars of paving thereafter. Um, that work up, up in the Aspet Hill neighborhood will include sidewalk reconstruction, the sidewalks are suffering the same condition as the uh, travel uh, roadway. So um, hopefully that clarifies some of the sidewalk questions and on the tree side, we do not have any current funds proposed for tree replacement. I did provide a um, draft tree replacement program to Tim and Lori for consideration. And I know Lori uh, has been discussing um, possibly utilizing some grant fu- funds or ARPA funds to implement a tree replacement program. So her efforts are gonna be married hopefully with the uh, tree replacement program that uh, Tim and I are working on so that there can be a, a consensus to the board on funding and a process for, for tree replacement.
Thank you. I'm so glad about Aspet Hill too, but.
I know a lot of people that are.
Yeah, no, that's great to hear. Thanks, Scott. Thanks, Julianne. A couple of members' hands have gone up. Jeff?
Hi, yeah, yeah, I, and I might be misremembering, but I believe I saw something about how it costs five thousand dollars per tree, just talking about tree removal. I was curious, was that an estimate or was that from actual bids?
We solicit uh, tree removal services every year under a chapter thirty-B. The the process is we go through a public tree hearing in uh, late March, early April. It's coming up, I believe, next week is our tree hearing on Tuesday. Uh, once the tree is clear, the public hearing process that's required by Mass General Law, I'll then have our tree foreman go and observe all the trees, any tree that he and his crew are not comfortable removing, they do not remove. Um, I'm not gonna put them in a position to try to work on a tree that they deem is unsafe. We'll then uh, uh, get our contractor out there to evaluate the trees. The vast majority of the trees our contractor removes are um, are crane trees, they're, they warrant crane removal. Generally, you can get two or three mobilizations out of a crane in a day. So if you have two uh, adjacent trees, you can get those two done and maybe a third in a day. Uh, a tr- a crane crew is approximately ten thousand dollars a day and includes a crane, a chipper and a log truck. Um, plus police details. So on a, on a good crane day, you could get three or four trees. On a rough one, you get two. Um, so that's, that's generally the process. Um, we try to uh, streamline it as best we can by stacking them, you know, do, do four on Howard Street if you can. Um, as opposed to having them move a crane all over town. Uh, but gen- generally that's, that's the process we, we, we go through. We remove somewhere between forty-five and sixty-five trees a year.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks, Jeff. Lisa?
Okay, I've got a couple. Um, going back to the, the complete streets question that Julianne started with, um, I don't, I don't remember having a discussion uh, prior to that going to the Blake Street um, project. And I'm a little concerned because, well, we didn't talk about it, but that the Blake Street project isn't expected to start for two or three years, if I'm not mistaken. So why would we take the small amount of funds and wait for two or three years when we have so many other places that really could utilize um, some money to get some sidewalks put in?
Uh, Blake Street and Pierce and um, that whole area was identified through the public input process and survey process um, during the development of the prioritization plan. Those, those projects are clearly identified in the prioritization plan that the community put together. Um, and this board approved and so did Mass DOT. Uh, the discussions between myself, uh, the town planner um, indicated that the construction funding is relatively limited for the downtown revitalization. I know that, I know this board approved ARPA funding for the design phase. And the expectation is that that five hundred thousand dollars could be, for lack of better terms, a kickstart um, to get uh, to get the improvements going. I, I, if this board chose to allocate the five hundred thousand dollars to other sidewalk projects elsewhere in town, I'm happy to implement them. Um, I'd have to secure some funds for design, complete streets only funds construction. But um, you know, those funds are, are, are at the um, the discretion of the board.
Okay, good. I think we'll, we'll talk about that. Thank you very much. And then the other question I had was that there's street lighting costs. And um, and I know that we had funded some ARPA money toward new light bulbs and such. Um, over three hundred thousand. Where does that fall into this budget for your street lighting?
Here, I mute, Tim.
We didn't adjust the one hundred eighty-six thousand that's allocated for streetlights now downward because I didn't know when that project was actually going to start. Uh, we, like I, like I presented in the memo, we had Real Tech was a group that a previous town administrator had uh, worked with. They gave us a number. I looked for a revised number. I think it was three hundred forty-seven thousand to change out all the lights to LED and give us some controls and so forth. Uh, after that meeting, we went, I went to CMRPC and then Scott was charged with going out and seeing if we can find another vendor that can do it uh, cheaper and quicker. So that's where we're at. I think we're expecting some information back this week, right, Scott, in terms of people who can provide that service?
Yeah, we, we, we released a scope of services, um, a request for proposals to a variety of vendors that CMRPC provided to us that do the same service. Uh, those are due in by uh, the twenty-ninth of March. Um, even if we hired somebody on the thirtieth of March, I don't believe there's any way the streetlights would be uh, installed by the end of FY twenty-five. The lead time for LED fixtures is very long. There's new technology coming out with a softer light. Um, you, the old LED lights that were a bit bright and blinding, the, the three K lights, a lot of communities are going toward four Ks. Um, there's a lot longer of a lead time on those and there's some considerations for, for this board on, on which, you know, lighting co- components they, they'd like to implement, so. Um, I believe the, the budget uh, being presented as it is, 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 is what's gonna be needed for FY twenty-five.
So, so what, so basically the light bulbs that we did get won't have anything to do with this for a couple of years then?
Six, we'll see a reduction of at least a hundred thousand out of that lineup.
In the first year?
In two thousand twenty-six, yeah, for the, if we, if we did it July one and they were installed, that year's savings under their proposal is estimated to be a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, but right now it won't be for a year anyway, is what you're saying?
Yeah, no matter what, it won't be.
Right.
And to be, unless we can get them on board and get them to start working June, we could start enjoying savings.
If you're familiar with um, Route eighty-five over um, over Route nine in South Borough, if you're heading um, on that section of eighty-five towards St. John's, uh, South Borough put in a um, a test area for the four K and three K lights. So if you're going down that causeway, it's a long straightaway, you'll see four very bright LED lights and then a series of much softer lights. Those are the three K, four K comparison. I've been out there a couple of times. Um, it's a good location to, to kind of see what we're talking about. So when we get down that, down the road a little further, um, that's the type of conversation we'll, we'll be having with the board.
Not only for viewing, but does it, but does it give a lesser expense if it's a lighter amount than the brighter ones? Because.
I don't, I don't know. I, I'm a civil engineer. All I know is the light switch is right over there and I'll flick it on and off. But we, we hire professionals for that.
Sounds like you're talking more about color temperature difference as opposed to aluminum's difference.
That's correct. Yeah, the candle, the candlelight is the same. Um, it's just how soft the light is. I, I go to the store trying to look buy a light bulb now. I spend an hour. There's so many different ones to pick from.
Just like six. So then what, what does this actual this year, what is street lighting including then? Just those that are burned out? Or the running of them?
First of all, just to clarify, that most streetlights in your community are unmeasured. And so they set a fixed rate for what they're going to run from national grid, so that fixed rate is what it's been for quite some time. I think it did go up this year. But the, the number we're carrying will pay for the electricity that powers those lights. That's what the one hundred eighty-six thousand is for.
Okay, and those are just what we have now, not adding any new ones?
No, and I, I didn't, I don't think we have a plan to add any. But usually streetlight additions are approved by the board. At least that's in other communities.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Jeff, I see your hand up again.
No, yeah, just about the light bulb. So just what I understand, so the, the four K are the ones that are not as bright. Right? So they're not, is that correct? So the three K are the ones that are very bright? That might be distracting?
Correct.
Okay, and then, and then the ones we have now, I guess some kind of traditional incandescent, because I, I know sometimes they cycle on and off and I'm guessing it's because of heat. So that problem goes away, right, with this, with this change?
The ones we have now are high-pressure sodium. I don't know a lot about lights. I really don't. So I mean, we have experts that come in and get, and guide us through the process. After, you know, talk to me in about a year and a half, I'll probably be, I'll probably be able to pretend to be an expert. Right now or not.
I'll, I'll put it in my calendar to talk to you.
Okay.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other uh, questions from either committee member that's on here? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing. Um, I see several members of the public in the electronic audience. If you have any questions or comments on our budget as presented, uh, please raise your electronic hands. I'll be happy to recognize you. And I know that the public, as with members here, this is their first time seeing this, so it may be a matter of absorbing some information to generate some questions. I don't see any hands up yet. I'll give it another moment. Um, again, not seeing any, um, what is the uh, the board's thought on closing versus continuing the budget, public hearing? Julianne?
Well, I, I think we should continue it. Didn't this, didn't a lot of the budget information just come online today?
It did.
You know, just to give the public a chance to, to take a look and ask some questions. It doesn't have to be long necessarily, but.
Uh, Scott Rogers?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to, you know, the, the appropriations committee has been working on these budgets for a number of weeks, so if there's a member of the public that wants to look at uh, any of the particular presentations by one of the departments, you can look back at like in week one, we had Public Works and in the second week we had Police, then Senior Center and all that. So those recordings are available on YouTube. And so folks want to hear the department uh, heads present their budgets to appropriations, hear some of that background and context information. Those, those recordings at two X speed go pretty well.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, um, Laura?
Yeah, my preference would be to wait if that's, you know, if, if that's what you're inquiring from our board about. I would appreciate that.
Yeah, okay, Lisa?
I agree with Laura and Julianne. I'd like to keep it open for a little while.
We have uh, some consensus building on that. Um, Tim or Jason, is there any negative ramification for us to uh, continue the public hearing to some future date? We'll figure out that date in a moment.
I don't think so, but I just wanna add one thing after Jason leads.
Oh, I, I was just gonna say the negative impact would be just like the, the timing of working with a printer to print warrant books for town meeting. But that's, that's the major drawback.
Okay.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks. The, so then the next question is the date. Do we want to try to meet again next Monday night, which is currently not a um, not a board night, but we could reserve it for, for this purpose and anything else related to the budget or warrant that comes up between now and then, um, or we could wait until uh, the eighth, which would be our next regularly scheduled meeting night. The biggest downside of that is that, then that is two weeks before uh, town meeting and provides, I, I think crunches that schedule even more based on what Jason was talking about.
I think it'd be better off maybe Monday night, the first.
That was funny as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine with me too.
Me too.
Okay, um, Tim, Jason, are you available next Monday night?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I believe a, I believe a appropriations meeting was gonna be held that night at five, but maybe if this meeting's at seven, it, it'll accommodate, be able to accommodate both. But uh.
Thanks, Scott. That works for your uh, for your committee um, to, to join us and have your meeting prior?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm miss, I'm misspeaking. It's not appropriations, it's financial planning that would be meeting at that time.
Okay.
But from an appropriations uh, preview, I was canvassing um, members needing a potential meeting day and we're likely to have a forum on, on the first. Based on the, on feedback.
You said likely, not unlikely, correct?
Uh, likely, yes.
Like, okay, great, okay. Yeah, I mean, you, you know, I don't think there's anything that we would expect you to vote on during the public hearing, but it is certainly most helpful if you're, if you've got a forum here, if we need to reach consensus on something. Um, okay, so I, I think um, what we should do then is continue the public hearing to Monday, uh, April first. Um, at the risk of housing, having a budget hearing on April Fool's Day and the jokes that will come in. Um, at the risk of housing, having a budget hearing on April Fool's Day and the jokes that will come in with that, um, at seven PM. Is that unreasonable to everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. With that, I will entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to continue the joint public hearing with the appropriations committee to. Monday, April first at seven PM.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Uh, any other comments or questions? Okay, um, all those in favor? Kristen?
Aye.
Julianne?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. Scott, do you want to vote the same with your, your committee? That's up to you.
Uh, I, I don't know if a vote is required.
I, yeah, I think you're probably right. Um, okay, Tim, I see your, so, so that's, that's what will happen. Tim, I see your hands still up. Did you have something you wanted to add on this item?
No, when you're done, I just have one general thing, if you could.
Okay, um. Okay, I, I will say as we. Temporarily adjourn the, uh, the public hearing, the budget public hearing until next Monday, um. That I appreciate as, uh, Tim started to at the, at the beginning of his presentation, appreciate the hard work. And process that's gone into this so far. I know, um, you know, in a typical year. Around December first, the administration and finance departments are hard at work on the budget already. Um, having heard from departments and starting to crunch numbers and planning and, and everything else. As of December first, we had no town administrator, no finance director. So the fact that we are this far, um, at this stage, even though we are closer to town meeting than we would like. The fact that we are in this good shape really is remarkable and, uh, and I really appreciate that. Um, you know, Tim's team, Jason's team and everybody else. Working together and hopefully next Monday we'll, uh, we'll close it out. Um, okay, so that concludes the public hearing. Uh, Tim, did you have anything else you wanted to add right now?
I just want. I know we're a big fan of local cable. And I, I do this. Thing from time to time, especially with sixty six warrant articles. Is I use local cable to present just information. For two purposes. One is to talk about the article on TV and let people watch at their leisure. So I want to do that and I just want to let the board know that I'm going to do that. The second piece is I want people to feel like they can call us. They can call Jason, they can call me. And we can get answers to their questions because it's gonna be hard. Um, to walk in to town meeting on the twenty second and ask. To hand out a document and ask someone to make many, many important decisions for the community. Um, that night on sixty six articles. So I, I want to use cable to do that, but I want to encourage people. If they have questions, they can call and get information ahead of time. I'm not trying to. Skew how they see things. I have no real skin in the game. But I want at least provide a resource for information and educate people so they can make the best decision possible. So that's my. My spiel, if you will, uh, to get people to watch local cable. Hear about the articles one at a time. I won't force you to watch the whole thing. We'll table contents it so you can. Click on one and watch one, watch six, watch twenty three. And not have to listen to the whole thing. So. We have a strategy relative to that, but I want to promote, call us. And we'll be on cable trying to educate people as best we can. Before the twenty second.
That's great. Uh, Tim, I think that's wonderful to, to use cable to, uh, to talk about that. I. One of the things that I have found in other communities that do that is it makes it a little bit more approachable. To people that are new to town meeting. That they can watch some of those things and have some idea as to the detail that, that is behind there because. If it's your first time at town meeting and you haven't had any, uh, any education on the process and the specifics, it's really a rush. Um, and, uh, I, I'm. I'm always working towards trying to get more people to town meeting and this will help. So I appreciate that. Okay, um, so that concludes the, uh, the joint public hearing part of the evening, um. So members of, of the appropriations committee, I don't think you need to stick around. Of course, you're, we're always happy to have you. So, um. With that, I'll certainly see you next Monday, Scott.
Yeah, just, just one, one question, Mitch, or one, one comment as we make the transition from the budget and then as you go into the. Review of the, um, warrant articles for town meeting. Um, you'll see that, you know, from the budget and in these articles. There's a large section of capital planning items that are paid for by free cash. The large section of community preservation articles that John Campbell reviewed that is paid for by. Um, Community Preservation Act funds. There's an opportunity with the resources that you have in terms of ARPA funding. To also pay for capital projects or town improvements. Or other ways to offset potential tax impacts to the community. So. There's an opportunity for you to consider projects that have been brought forward like CPC. Reviewed. Community preservation projects like financial planning reviewed, capital projects. You've got an opportunity to utilize the ARPA funds, help offset and pay for those elements, uh, as we go into town.
Appreciate that, that, that idea, Scott. Um, thank you, and, uh, Laura?
I actually wanted to chime in about Tim's idea to do that so for Northwell Cable. I too love that idea. When you're going through that, can you include just a blurb about the new voting strategy for this year as well? And how we're gonna be using clickers? Because I know that there's been a lot of enthusiasm around that. And it might be fun so that people can just kind of prepare themselves. But otherwise I love this idea and it's been a lot of. I, I'm looking forward to it. So thank you. That was all.
Great, thanks Laura. All right. Preparation member, thank you for joining us, uh, this evening. We'll move on. The next item is to reopen the town meeting warrant for the purpose of, uh, of review. Reviewing the amended article regarding health and human services. Um, Tim, do you want to just, I, I think we know a little bit about this already, but, uh, let, let us know exactly what we're being asked to do.
Okay, so Article thirty seven and thirty eight, when we sent this to town council for review. After we had the last meeting, um. I don't remember the dates now, but anyways. When town council reviewed this, it's pretty technical to create a new code and amend a code. So we have, you know, underline new, strike through what we're deleting. And for ease of reading. Uh, he recommended, Brian, uh, town council, breaking these up into two articles. So we had one article. It had all the same language. But he recommended breaking it out for the ease of the public to read. So that's. That was the reason on Monday we wanted to reopen this. We learned today. That there were things in the planning department that didn't make it into this document. That were in a memo on three twenty one to the board. And it laid it out. So you had it, just wasn't inside the document. So. I, you know, we've. We're doing two things here. We're being extremely self-effacing, saying, hey, we are moving pretty quick. We're taking responsibility for the mistakes that we're making and this is one of the mistakes we made. So we apologize. There's not a lot I can do about it. So that's. That's my story. Unfortunately.
Laura?
Was there any feedback from the public about the new Health and Human Services? Proposal that we reviewed at our last meeting?
Just the survey that we did prior to during the study. Those are the only pieces we had. I, Diane, have you heard any? I, I haven't had any.
Thank you.
There was one email from, from one gentleman that emails us quite a bit. I think Mitch responded to him, so.
Okay.
Certainly that one is the one that I recall.
Um, procedurally, um. And this kind of goes to. The next item on the agenda, which is, um. To execute the town meeting warrant. Are we? If, I think procedurally, we're probably better off keeping that in line with the budget public hearing extension. Um, are there? Downsides to that otherwise? I think if we're, if we're holding off printing the town meeting booklet anyway, um. Are there other downsides to not executing the town meeting warrant tonight? If we run across other. Um, minor improvements that we want, might want to make between now and then, or Tim or Jason, do you recommend that we execute? The warrant anyway this evening?
Jason, you go first if you want.
Um, I. I don't really, uh, I don't really know the answer to that question, Mitch. Um, that's a.
Okay.
It, I, I thought that the hearing would be closed tonight, so I, I don't, I'm not prepared to really answer that question. Um. Obviously, I assume that there's no legal hurdle that we're, we're running into in terms of the. The town code or anything with posting deadlines.
Jason, just one step further though, with the Article four for the budget and the language that is in there. I guess is there a scenario where, if they sign tonight? Could that be impacted in any way?
I, I, I guess my, um. My, my take would be that if, if there are still questions about the budget and so forth, it's not an endorsement of posting the warrant and. Closing the hearing wouldn't be necessarily be an endorsement of the budget. It would just be. Saying that it was okay to go forward with posting the budget as, as it was presented, um. Most recent years, we've been printing, um. Motions in the town meeting book. Which could differ from the, from the, the, the article. So. I mean, I kind of viewed that we would close the. The hearing and then any education that had to happen between now and town meeting could, could. People could be informed in, in that time period between then, because I, I know we've. Typically come before the, the select board with, with budgets in the past that have had a similar amount of time. Timeline leading up to it. And I mean, in terms of releasing the budgets and, which is obviously less than ideal, but. As, as I see it, like if, if you were to have. Close the hearing and, and sign the warrant, the, um. The, the, the budget, that would be the high watermark. We couldn't increase the budget further at town meeting. I don't think the moderator would allow for, for. That to be entertained, but there certainly could be, um, a, a scenario whereby the budgets were reduced or, or. Something, you know, whereby a, a, a motion was printed in the town meeting book, so it was transparent and clear to everyone what, what action was intended to be taken. So like a, a lot, I'm, I'm doing a long way of saying that. I don't, I don't know what the implication is of, of delaying everything. I mean, I understand that. You know, the, the other financial boards and committees. May, if we, if we decide to change something between now and then, in terms of financial articles, we're gonna have to convene meetings again to. To revote recommendations.
I mean, I, I'm not anticipating changing anything, but I, I feel that this board owes a responsibility to the public. Through the public hearing process that if. To, to provide the opportunity for the public to call in to the public hearing and convince us to change something. That. Opportunity should be afforded and, you know, given that the. Budget wasn't available to the public any earlier than it was available to us, uh, a couple hours before tonight's meeting. That, uh, that's why I think it's a good idea to continue the public hearing and, and thus I prefer leaving the option open. To change that and that change could be decreasing. Change could in theory be increasing some item. Um, I don't want to throw that off the table even that it be unlikely. So if there, if there's no downside to it that, that anyone can determine, I think it's. Who, I, I, on the item we're, we're on as far as opening, adding and closing again makes sense. But I, because it's so closely tied to executing the warrant. That's what I wanted to think about. Tim, any, any thoughts?
Well, I'm just thinking, Diane, is there a, what's the typical timeframe logistically to make copies? Of this document for a town meeting posting? I, we post in seven places?
Well, we have to, I mean, we have two weeks before that we have to post it. We can certainly make copies, you know, in-house. Until we can get, um, you know, for a limited amount of copies. I think if you were to. Postpone it until April first, our meeting again on April first, I, I don't see that that would pose any problems. The deadline really would be April eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, to post it and get it. So we got a, we got a week buffer. As long as we deal with whatever the, the matters are in here now and not have to put them again.
Yeah.
Be delightful.
Yeah, okay, so. My thinking and board members, tell me if you agree or disagree is, is we should move forward with. Um, you know, reopening and adding in that other article. Um, but not executing. Um, because I, I'll give you an example. Tim, I received an email from Linda at six forty four PM. With some textual changes. Um, to typo fixes and things like that that I had found, um, over the weekend. So. You know, I want to make sure that, that those can get in there, uh, with the detail. Those don't, we're not, not changing any dollar amounts or, uh, or adding or removing any articles with that. Those are just some, some. Formatting changes essentially.
And, and the planning. Adjustments.
Yep. Yeah, definitely want to get that in there.
Those are all in the newest one that, that I have in front of me and I, I think you have in front of you, but I, I have no. There's no issues for us to wait till April one.
Okay, great. All right, uh, members of the board, everyone in agreement? With that, okay, I'm seeing a lot of, a lot of thumbs up. Appreciate that. All right, with that, did anyone have any questions? About the, um, reopening the town meeting warrant for the purpose of, um, reviewing the amended, uh, article about health and human services? Okay, um. Hearing nothing on that. Is there a motion to that effect?
Oh, sorry, that's me, um. So my motion is, um, I move the board vote to reopen the town meeting warrant for the purpose of reviewing. The amended articles related to the health and human services and zoning. Second.
Okay, um, Tim, question on that. Should that motion, I just think about this now. Should that motion also say to close the? Warrant again? So that it's not left open?
Okay, your charter only talks about. Closing it, never talks about opening it. So yeah, it should be to close.
Mm-hmm.
Now you'll have a closed. Between now and Monday, you'll have a closed document that'll be.
Yeah.
Fix the typos and then you'll be able to execute it.
Okay, um, Julianne, are you okay? Um. Sort of if, if we restate that saying, uh, to add. Re, reopening, add and then close the warrant? Do you want me to re. Restate that so it's consistent with what Tim suggested?
But I thought we were going to close the warrant. On April first.
So, so we've already closed the warrant.
Right.
We did that at a prior meeting. We need to reopen to add. The second Health and Human Services article. The thought process is close it again. Leaving it open, um. Presents other potential issues. So it's best to close it. We're not executing it tonight. That's, that's. An agenda item that we've already decided to skip over. So we're going to open, add and close.
So the motion would be. That the board vote to reopen, add and close the town meeting warrant for the purpose of reviewing. The amended articles related to the health and human services and zoning. That the correct motion?
Sure. Does that sound good, Tim?
Yes, yeah, it's, it's all in one. It's one complete, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And I forget who seconded it earlier?
Kristen.
Okay, Kristen, are you good with?
Yep.
That revised motion. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to open. Uh, to, to reopen, add the Health and Human, Human Services article and close the town meeting warrant. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Julianne?
Aye.
Sorry, uh, Lisa, question?
Forgot the zoning. You just said the planning. Uh, you, you forgot the zoning included in that.
I don't think we're not adding. An article for the zoning, correct? We're making changes to existing articles that we've already inserted?
I thought there was an addition.
In the March, um, twenty first memo, I don't think, I think it's language inside existing. I think they were clarifying signage. I don't have that at my fingertips, so I'm sorry. I don't, I'm. Ninety-five percent confident.
Okay.
Right, because I just, I mean, her, the, the original motion says health, human services and zoning on it, so I don't know.
Oh, it does. You're right, um. Articles related to health and human services and zoning.
I believe I said zoning.
Yes, you did. You did, right. All right. So if there's anything zoning wise that needed to be added, that has accomplished that fact.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out, Lisa. I missed that. Uh, but the motion was correct. Um, all right, any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Uh, I have a quick question, Mitch. I'm so sorry.
Uh, I have a quick question. I'm so sorry.
Sure.
I just noticed on the agenda for the meeting, it says the purposes of reviewing the article for Health and Human Services. But not zoning.
Yeah, um, the the zoning became the zoning item became aware very late in the process um after the forty-eight hour deadline, so it's it's okay to include.
Okay. Um, then I, yeah.
Okay, and I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Uh, we have an opened in updated and closed town meeting warrant. Excellent. Um, I think we have all agreed at this point to pass over the approval and execution of the April twenty-two, twenty twenty-four town meeting warrant. Uh, does anyone have any any items to discuss on that before we continue on? Um. Okay, very good. And so next up on our agenda is approval and uh let's see approval and execution of the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four annual town election warrant. Tim, I know this is this is procedural.
Yes, it is. It's um, I'm trying to find it as we speak, but yeah, it's it's to have the election. It needs the board's signatures.
Okay. Everyone want to have an election?
Yes. Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I move the board's vote to approve and execute the May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four town election warrant.
Second.
Motion made by Laura is seconded by Julianne. Any questions or comments?
I hope we get an amazing turnout.
Yes, however.
Show up and vote.
Yep, my hope for this particular election is I hope that a lot of people vote early, take advantage of that option. Um, because schools, um I think honestly, I don't remember if schools are going to be closed. I think schools will be open for the local election this year and um we know at Melican, the um the traffic and everything else gets pretty concerning and we know the school committee um has expressed some of those concerns to us, which I truly appreciate. The more as a town we can get in the habit of taking advantage of the early voting, the less that pressure is and then the easier it will be to figure out long term, where do elections take place? So that is my request of the community. Um, a- and this is from someone who loves Election Day dearly um is uh a- as much as possible, uh, take advantage of the early voting. All right.
So along along those lines, when can we start letting people know about the process? Like, how how can we reach the widest audience? Can we do a press release? Like, what else can we do to reach people that aren't on Facebook, let them know about early voting?
I think um we can ask Tim to let Town Clerk Andy Dowd uh know of our interest, uh particularly this time around for for this process and Andy is excellent at getting the word out. And I'm I'm sure he will uh he will do that. And then once that happens, we can all repeat that.
And can I go out?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Laura, finish.
I was just gonna ask if I can go up through the, you know, there's the automated voicemail that the town sometimes sends out. Can we do like a black message like that to people's phones for people that have subscribed that way?
The voice one, the voice ones, I think they try, people try to reserve for real emergencies.
Correct.
Yeah, so I.
But towns use it for it just for information.
Yeah, I I.
I agree. I get what North Brookfield all the time for everything. I don't know.
I I'm hesitant to make a change, my own feeling, make a change on how that gets used without having a discussion with the police chief and fire chief and other people that may have opinions about how best to use that service. So I'm okay having that discussion between now and as we get closer to Election Day. Um, my preference is not to say we're going to do that now without hearing from them.
I would definitely like to have that conversation.
Like that conversation too.
Okay. Great, um, Tim and Diane, could you make a note um to have um, you know, maybe some input from the impact departments and um and perhaps put that on an upcoming agenda?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask a question? When you use, this is under the code red. Is that what it's called, the code red? Or is it it's a different type of a announce?
Code red is what it's called.
Okay, so um I forgot what I was gonna ask the question. All right, so being under being under that, does it cost us more to use it? Or does it? Is it a flat fee, whether or not we put announcements on there or don't put announcements on it?
It used to be back when I first instituted it in another place. You you bought a package of minutes and you tried to condense as best you could. Uh, the the text messages, I think, were free back then. The voice, depending on the duration, there was a cost per minute. Uh, I don't know what your contract says now. Um, but your news.
Just got a hand up from our fire chief who may have the answer to that. You mind if I jump over to him? Chief Parenti, if you could unmute and uh.
He just may have the answer to that. There's no additional cost. Uh, Tim, you're right. That's that's what the old uh our old contract was, but we've updated it, so we have no limit.
Yeah. Chief, thanks, Laura?
And maybe along those lines, like I get alerts in Texas, just from my school, if there's snow days, if there's weather delays, if the bus has problems. I don't know if the school's on a different system, but they definitely use it for all sorts of reasons and I I love it.
Yeah, they're on a different system than.
Thank you. That being the case, I I really do, with sooner discussion on that would be greater. And I think that we're we're not using a resource that we have in our hands since we don't have newspapers much anymore.
I think, do I remember right that at our next regular meeting, we're meeting with Andy anyway? Um, I think we think to talk about time meeting clickers or something like that. I'm just thinking off the top of my head. I could be wrong. Um, all right, well, let's, yeah, let's put that on on our April eighth agenda if we can and make a determination there.
I just made a note.
Okay, thanks, Diane. Okay, thank you, chief. Um, okay, so Julianne?
Um, just to continue with what Laura started, um, I uh, how are we advertising town meeting?
Hmm.
I mean, Town Clerk generally takes care of that. Diane, I don't know if uh if you had any other information from prior years. I know, sorry, go ahead.
Well, I I know that it's always been um the Julianne's triumph to to get it out there as much as possible. So I think um you know, some of the things we've discussed in the past, we can bring up again. I can coordinate with the Andy. Um, maybe the I'm not sure about the Lions Club sign, the DPW sign, you know, we'll try to do what we can to get the word out.
Maybe um since we are having a special meeting next Monday to finalize town meeting, um, maybe you could come back with um a little bit of sort of a marketing summary.
Sure.
That'd be great.
What if we just had, you know, those yard signs that people do for elections at every municipal building, schools? And anybody else who wants to do one, maybe in front of our properties, um, but I I and I am, well, yeah, Diane, you're right. I always persuade about that, but.
It's a good plan.
Yeah, well, it's a good thing to think about. Yeah, yeah, yep. Okay. All right, so back to the motion that Laura made and I think Kristen seconded it. Do I remember somebody seconded it? I know to um move that the board vote to approve and execute the May fourteen, twenty twenty-four town election warrant. Several of us voted already. I'm gonna ask we do it again since we um started a little bit more. So, uh, Laura, how do you vote?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Julianne?
I.
Lisa?
I.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. We have an election. Thank you very, very much. Um.
Andy, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, do we know when that has to be executed and back to Andy? You're muted.
By April eighth.
All right, so if you guys can come in and sign at your leisure. Thank you.
Yep, great.
That'll be ready.
Yep, uh, next up, we have acceptance of funds from the Green Communities Competitive Grant for Projects Relating to the Senior Center and Library. Tim?
Um, so you should have a memo, not a memo, but a letter from the state relative to this Green Communities grant. It was applied for before I got here for um heating and ventilation and uh buildings, ceiling, air assailant uh through the Green Communities. I'm not sure if it was a combination of Becca and or Scott did made application for the COA to have some work done uh and the library. So they made application for the grant and you know, having, you know, a full depth on the bench, we realized that accepting grants under the state law requires the board's approval. So that's why we're here. I'm not so sure you've done this in the past and we just want to do it right and that's why this is before you tonight.
Can we list? Can we list what the the projects funded, please? Or do I have it, but?
I I do not have the document. Um, I have a lot of paper, but I don't have that.
Well, if you wouldn't mind.
It is fine. It'd be great if someone.
I I've got it in front of me also, but if Lisa, if you want to read them, that's fine.
Do you want to put yours up on the screen, maybe?
Oh, sure. I can put it up on the screen. Um. Make sure that's uh, that is that one.
There you go.
Okay, so um, this is the award letter from the Department of Energy Resources um to our our first interim town administrator, Bob Reed, because that's when that uh was applied for. He was uh helping us out. So we have five thousand dollars for administrative assistance, twenty thousand and change for the Senior Center for Duck Air Ceiling, seventy-two and change to the library for weatherization and insulation and twenty-nine thousand and change to the Senior Center for also for weatherization and insulation. Um, and it goes into some of the details and procedures as to how that works. Any questions or uh comments before I unshare my screen on that? Just be allowed. I don't see everybody right now.
Um, I just want to ask what what actually weatherization and insulation is in areas or where areas needed or it's kind of vague, so.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be windows.
Yeah, I I don't know the answer to that. Um, I know.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, we 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 talked about this briefly at the library trustees meeting um uh a week or two ago, um after the award letter had uh come in and, you know, the library became aware of it. Um, we don't exactly know where that's going. We suspect that uh that Sean at the DPW Facilities Director has more of an idea than anybody else. I'm sure he was involved with the grant application. Um, but exactly what parts of the building were we weren't quite sure, but I'm sure that the grant would not have been awarded if those hadn't been those details hadn't been determined.
Could it go towards some of the leaking roofs that the libraries had had listed or the senior center had listed?
Don't know the answer to that. It it weatherization and insulation, I would guess not. Water waterproofing would be something different. But it would be, we we don't have any, we don't have much say on that, um, that the grant application would have specified what it would be used for and it needs to be used within those parameters. Um, you know, maybe if if the specific suggestions, maybe reach out to Tim and he could ask uh Sean to um to provide any more details.
Yeah, because I think maybe somebody might be interested in knowing what what they actually were getting for that.
Hmm.
It's great.
We know, we we all know the scope. I just don't know it off and I can get you the scope tomorrow for the work to be done in the two locations.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'd love to hear a motion to accept the funds.
I move the board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A to accept funds in the amount of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars from the Green Communities Competitive Grant for projects relating to the Senior Center and Library and to authorize expenditure of same by the DPW Director.
Second.
Motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other uh comments or questions? Okay, uh, Lisa, was that a question?
No.
Okay, um, all those in favor, Kristen?
I.
Julianne?
I.
Laura?
I.
Lisa?
I.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor. Thank you very much. Um next up on our agenda is acceptance of funds from a state earmark award for the reservoir dam removal project. The dam project that never seems to go away um until it finally will. Tim?
I know two things about this. The state wants to get rid of dams, but they need to do a lot of study and this grant will fund that study. It's an earmark. It must have emanated from this board or someone on staff some time ago and again, keeping consistent with the last item on the agenda, uh looking for approval from the board to be able to accept those funds and expend those funds for that purpose. Again, I don't know the scope of that one either, but I know it's I know it's needed.
Yep. Yeah, we've we've been talking about it for a couple of years. Yeah. Yeah, I think there was there was a shortfall at some point identified, um possibly because of how long the state has taken to move things forward that they're uh giving us a little bit of extra money to cover this cost escalation or some additional work that they've asked for. Okay, here, seeing no, any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, to accept funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from a state earmark award for the reservoir dam removal project and to authorize expenditure of same by the DPW Director.
Second.
A motion made by Julianne, seconded by Laura. Any other comments or questions? Uh, Julianne?
I.
You vote? Laura?
I.
Kristen?
I.
Lisa?
I.
I also vote I vote as unanimous in favor.
Mr. Chair, can I just, I I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Senator Kennedy's office and her for the efforts on this. I maybe you've already mentioned I missed it, but I she was the driving force in getting the earmark, so I want to acknowledge her efforts and say thank you.
Yes, very good. Thank you, Senator Kennedy. Uh, next up on our agenda is consideration and vote to change the hours of operation for the Bartlett Street Safety Zone. William Pierce Traffic Safety Committee Chair has been waiting very patiently for uh a little while. Bill, thank you very much for for sticking with us.
It's been an interesting meeting.
Can I, okay, I'm just gonna interrupt and recuse myself and go off camera since I live.
Very good. Thank you, Kristen.
Lovely area.
Uh, good evening, Select Board. Uh, my name is Bill Pierce. I live at three sixty-seven Whitney Street. I am the chairman of the Traffic Safety Committee. And I'm here today. Um, we actually received a letter from a resident through the the Select Board um asking about the safety zone lights on Bartlett Street, which is by the high school. Um, just so everyone's aware, this is not considered a school zone. These are safety lights, which is why this comes in front of this board instead of uh the school board. Um, so uh I guess the uh initial letter uh said that um they had a concern about the lights and the restrictions being being displayed and on until nine P M at night. Um, so that letter was referred to my committee and we reviewed it. Um, what we found was um the it was originally set to this due to some of the late night um I things that go on at the high school, um specifically around eight o'clock, some of the sports games and things like that. So they wanted to keep the the initial thought a few years ago was to keep the restriction, the speed restriction down. Um. There aren't that many school events that go past eight o'clock. Um, when we did reach out to the um the school administration, they did not have a recommendation one way or the other on this. Um. We did confirm with uh the police chief that um they generally help. we did confirm with uh, the police chief that um, they generally help with crowd control at events and not traffic control unnecessarily. Um, so after going back and forth in our committee, um, we initially thought of reducing it to 6:00 PM. Um, after some conversation, what we decided on and what we vote, ended up voting unanimously on was to recommend a 7:30. Um, with a review after a year um, to determine if, you know, if there's still a need or not. That's all, about all I have. Uh, I'm willing to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Bill. Questions? Julianne, then Lisa.
Well, first of all, um, Bill, I've been watching some of your meetings and you've been doing some great work there. Um, so, so you mentioned that, that this is all coming before us because because one, uh, because of one request, correct?
Yeah, most of the things, most of the items that we get are from a single request. Um, but you know, we're trying to look at it holistically from the community in general.
Uh-huh. So there was no outreach to the neighborhood to see what the other neighbors might be experiencing?
No.
Hmm. And, and then you also said something about most of the activities at the high school end around eight, which to me would mean by the time kids got in their cars and, or were picked up, you're talking 8:30. So, I, I'm just.
Yeah, there, there aren't too many I, um, that go that late. Um, usually it might be a, um, you know, a, a late night football game or, um, you know, a soccer game. Uh, but generally, they're usually over before eight o'clock.
Okay, but by eight o'clock, you're still, at eight o'clock, parents are going to pick kids up or kids are driving. So that's after eight o'clock in my head. No?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
All right. That's all my questions.
Okay, thanks, Julianne. Lisa?
Um, I kind of had the same questions that Julianne had. I would have liked to have had the neighborhood at least. Um, because there was a long discussion when this first came about, if I remember correctly, of putting this light in. And the concerns that the parents that had asked for it were about the young drivers and about, um, you know, there's no other way to really, well, kind of control some of the speed that goes in that area. So, um, I think nine o'clock was something that they had talked about because of their uh, other, of things getting done. And, um, and I have a tendency to, to think that maybe this is probably one of the things we could wait, maybe hold off on or maybe come back in half a year and see if in fact it, you know, making it smaller, making it shorter to 7:30 might be the good idea and just leave it for the, leave it for half a year to see how that works or get, or get a survey. Um, I think that anytime parents have asked for safety in the past, um, I think it's a good, a good thing to support, especially with the truck traffic that we have down there since Amazon came along and with the new student drivers and um, just in general, it's a kind of an interesting area for traffic to come up over the hill. So unless it's really causing a problem um, with the neighborhood, um, they feel the lights too much, too much in their eyes because there's no sound, right? It's just a blinking light.
Correct, it's no sound.
Yeah, and I, I think I remember that that um, Chief Griffin had said, as long as you keep it the same, we don't mind. Just, you can't change it around. And at this point, um, I think we might err on the safety side and maybe just leave it where it is and then come back and revisit it. But that's an opinion.
Yeah, one of the things we did uh, discuss as well is these lights are not dynamic. They are static. Um, it takes quite a bit to change them. Um, so, um, you, you can't just go out there and, and set it to, you know, eight o'clock every Friday night and, and six o'clock on every Tuesday night or something like that.
Right, that's why he had said, leave it, leave it the way it was. So, um.
It'd be great if, I'm sorry, go ahead, Lisa. I apologize, I thought you were done.
Okay. Well, I just feel if there's a greater outcry, we would, we should respond to the greater outcry. But if there's not a greater outcry, my, my opinion would be to kind of err on the side of safety, leave it the way it is.
I mean, we did ask the Traffic Safety Committee to do this kind of work. And Bill, you have a police officer that participates and uh, is part of these discussions, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so my assumption is that the Police Department is okay um, with this change?
Um, he didn't have an, a suggestion one way or the other. Um, to be honest, we didn't, we didn't specifically ask him. Um, because when we did start talking about it, one of the things he mentioned was that his officers are there for event and crowd control and not traffic when they're at those events.
So they wouldn't necessarily be out to um, to pull over cars that might be going over the 20 mile an hour limit anyway?
Correct.
Okay, Laura?
I'm sorry, I, I'm not sure I understand what the request was. I don't know if there was an email that came in that I missed. I saw a letter that was in the packet. And, and I'm sorry if this is redundant, but why are they looking to reduce the hours? And I'm sorry to answer.
We had received the letter through the Select Board. So the Select Board received the letter um, and forwarded that request um, to review the, the timing on the lights. Um, because the thought was, was they were on much later than, than anyone is coming out of the school on a normal basis.
I just don't remember. I'm so sorry. I just checked my email. I don't remember seeing that. I, it was a light problem because I find those, those um, alerts really catch attention and I, you know, as a pedestrian on the road, they catch people's attention. They slow them down. And that strip, people can get kind of carried away, maybe going a little bit faster than they should. So I, I just don't understand why somebody is looking at changing it. And I don't know if that was in the original letter.
Okay, I, I do have that email. Um, uh, um, without talking to the person, I don't want to say their name, although of course it's public. Um, but I'll read some of it. So the board has some idea as far as the background. Um, I would like to put um, the Algonquin Regional High School Safety Zone hours on an upcoming agenda. I personally think right now they are too long, especially in the afternoon to evening. And it makes it hard for the uh, North Row Police Department to enforce and easy to ignore. Uh, as of now, the lights stop blinking at 9:00 PM. Um, this person spoke with Chief Griffin, um, and um, this was emailed also to the uh, school superintendent. Um, that was, that's basically the gist of it.
Did we get a copy of that? Because I don't remember seeing that either.
Yeah, I, I would have thought that maybe this would have gone out into the packet, but it didn't. It was, it was emailed by that individual to myself, Tim, uh, Chief Griffin, DPW Director and uh, School Superintendent. Um, and I don't remember who, but somebody suggested that this was perfect for the Traffic Safety Committee and it went on to them. Laura?
So it sounds like the person's come, or comment is related to the speeds on there and creating more work for the police? Enforcement?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't interpret it exactly that way. Um, I, I, my suspicion is, not being that person, that the um, going till nine o'clock every night when the vast majority of nights, there's nothing going on that late, that it might introduce for regular travels of that road. They, they might see it so often, they just ignore it with, without any reason. Um, you know, myself, if, if I was driving by the school at 8:30 at night, there wasn't anything, there wasn't any activity obviously going on. I would probably think, oh, these lights are broken. Um, you know, they should have gone off at, you know, four in the afternoon, little while after school. Um, I will slow down for those, but some people don't. Um, that I, I think there's some benefit in having the timing more closely patterned, the regular use and not the exceptional use. I don't know how many evenings the school has a, has a big activity until, you know, 8:30 or so at night. Um, as the parent of a high school student, um, it seems to be from the things that I see, may, maybe once every three or four weeks that there's something going on that late, probably a little bit more often than I see. But I don't think it's on a daily basis. So I, I think it's a matter of trying to match it to the, the most regularity of the need, not the exception of the need.
But this is separate from a school zone, correct? This is a safety zone for Bartlett?
Safety zone, yes. It is not a school zone.
Okay.
Yeah. I just know that, I'm sorry to keep going, but those signs really catch drivers' attention. Even when the temporary ones are on my street, people slow down. And I, my preference, I would love to have them all the time. Because it just, you know, I think we get caught up in our, you know, I don't know, not paying attention by accident. And I'm so grateful for the work of the Traffic Safety Committee and I appreciate this. But I just worry with so many other things going on in people's cars. If this catches their attention to slow them down an hour longer, my preference is to keep it.
Yeah, I think, to Mitch's point, right, I, I think the intention wasn't necessarily to stop it. It's a concern that people will just think it's broken. Right? If it's still going off at eight o'clock at night with no one coming out of the school. And so then they ignore it and then you get pulled over and, you know, everyone gets mad at the police for it.
Oh, Julianne?
Yeah, I, I, I'm with Laura on this. I, even, you know, even if there's no activity there, it's, it's, people, people become aware that when you're on Bartlett Street near the high school, you just slow down. And, um, I, it's, it's a safety zone. And if that's what, what people need to have explained more versus a school zone, then, then, you know, we have to do a better job educating the drivers there. But I, I don't see, I don't see any reason to change the hours now. They, they, we just started this, what, a year or so ago? And people are finally probably getting used to it. To change it now seems like, oh. I, I, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it to nine.
All right, so it sounds like there's consensus on the board to keep things as is. Um, we don't need to vote on that. Um, I guess my suggestion, Bill, is um, you know, at, at some future meeting, if you could assemble a little bit more information as far as the advantages of making this change, um, that would probably provide some additional insights that the board didn't get at this point. Um, and uh, and certainly welcome to entertain it again.
Yeah, and maybe, you know, we'll still keep with the recommendation to review it in a year. And maybe within that timeframe, I will work with the administration as well as Scott to um, to Julianne, to your suggestion, right, get a survey out, um, get, you know, other people's suggestions and so on. And, and see what, what a larger group thinks and live in that area.
Yeah, because my, my first question was, are the lights bothering some of the residents that are close by the lights? But it doesn't sound like that was, that was the issue. But that's great, Bill, if you would do that.
Yep, we can do that.
Great, Bill, thank you very much for, for joining us tonight. Really appreciate the work that your board is doing.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, good night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that concludes that item. Next we up, we have discussion of creation of liaison positions to the Fire Station Building Committee. Lisa Masali and Lisa, your name is there because you're the requestor and presenter of this one, not that we're making you a liaison to the Fire Station Building Committee. You know, there was some confusion about that from reading.
Thank you for that clarification.
Uh, Lisa, take it away.
Okay, um, I have been asked, um, well, I wanted to provide some information, uh, clarity about the whole question of a liaison to the Fire Station Committee. Um, the, the question came up, um, um, I don't know, was it a month ago now? You might know Mitch, or three weeks ago, that um, that there was a specific, um, uh, denotion in the charter that said, uh, no one shall hold another seat while on the financial planning. And it was something that had been overlooked, I believe, by uh, the former um, town administrator when he was going through making his appointments for the committee. And because of it being, um.
It's a bylaw, not a charter, but same idea.
Okay, so.
I, I apologize. I thought, I thought you would stop for a second. My audio is, is weirdly delayed tonight. I think it's a bylaw, not a charter.
Is that right?
As far as the specific where the part is, yeah.
Because I thought I saw it as the charter. But the question, you know, then you get into a, a conflict about, uh, you know, having this be written, I saw a written text. I don't know where it was written, but written text. And um, so I think what we should probably do is eliminate any question about a liaison for it, because I didn't see anything written about a liaison, and just ask Tim um, to find another person to fill that seat that was vacated by the um, the Financial Planning uh, Committee's Chairman, who had to step away because of this. Um, uh, you're saying bylaw?
I'm not sure what that has to do with the liaison.
The question.
Liaisons are informal.
He was asked, he was, he was saying that he wanted to continue on the finance, as the Finance Committee liaison. And because there is no, uh,
Right.
nothing written about having a liaison, and because it was so much in conflict with what this statement was, that I felt that it was better to not have any more question about it and to just have that seat filled with some, another person who is not on the Finance Committee. So that's why we're here tonight. Not because I'm, I'm supportive of a liaison. I'm not in support of a liaison. I just, I think it should be clean and I think there should be a new person in that seat.
Was there, okay.
Laura?
Was there a posting when that seat on the Fire Station Building Committee became vacated?
No, not that I'm aware of. It's a town administrator appointment. Um, frequently with these type of committees, um, when they're in the middle of doing some work, there are risks to the project of changing personnel. So I don't want to put words in Tim's mouth, but that might be why Tim didn't advertise that position right away. I don't know. Um, but the fire station or the, the, my understanding is whether it be as, as chair or as uh, Financial Planning Committee as a whole, a decision was made that they wanted to send a liaison to the Fire Station Building Committee. Um, it doesn't matter who, who requested it. Um, liaisons are, are informal, non-elected, have no vote um, positions. Uh, any board can send any liaison to any other board if they want to. Um, we can't prohibit that. We certainly shouldn't prohibit that. Um, yeah, that's completely separate than should the town administrator ask the town administrator to appoint someone else. One isn't related to the other.
Well, I have to clarify.
So the, the. Sure.
I have to clarify that that did not happen. The Financial Planning Committee did not have a vote, did not discuss, and did not request that they send a liaison to the Fire Station Committee. I talked to a couple of members about it. I looked at the uh, the minutes, not the minutes, but the video. So it was not discussed. Or request.
Yeah, I mean, the agenda item didn't alert them to, to join this, this committee. So we have no one to ask that question.
But isn't it in conflict with the bylaws? This seems a little bit tricky that we're.
The, no, because the, uh, uh, Tim, I'll, I'll ask you to, to, to step in here, but basically the bylaw says you can't be a member of. A member means you're voting. And you can't count as part of the quorum. A liaison, we are all liaisons to many committees. Um, that isn't anywhere in bylaws. That's just a traditional practice of the North Row Select Board. When we are a liaison to any number of committees, we don't count towards a quorum. We don't vote. We're there to, mostly to provide a conduit of information back and forth between two boards. And they can participate in the, the target board, if you will, the Fire Station Building Committee in this case, to the extent that the Chair wishes. And they can participate in the, the target board, if you will, the fire station building committee in this case, to the extent that the chair wishes. I don't think there's anything else. Tim.
I, I just, I'll confirm a couple of things about the committee. Right now, I, I think it's functioning and they have a quorum. So those are kind of like the baseline tests. I did not repost when that resignation come in. As you know, I had a couple of articles that would add to the membership and allow it and all that kind of stuff, but those are gone. Um, just because of the, the even number of the, the majority on those two committees. And, and allow it if the community so desired. But since it's functioning and it's a forum and they are, I don't know, thirty-seven, thirty-five percent down the road with this, I didn't see a need to replace uh, that outgoing member. For anybody else, I mean, there's levels of this, right? There's an appointed person for our committee who has a vote, who sits on a committee as a member. And then there's someone like me who's ex-officio in everything and I have no writing, no voting rights, even with this board. And then you have people who just are good citizens who attend meetings, gather what they think is information or whatever they perceive to be information and they bring it back to a board that they're on. There's no prohibition against that. So it's actually what you want. You want, you want one of your board members to go to another meeting and, and listen and get information and then make sure we get the facts straight about what's going on inside those committees.
Tim, do you see any prohibition under our bylaws of having a financial planning committee? Um, member be a liaison, um, to the fire station building committee or, or anything else?
I, I don't think you should, I don't think the liaison word should be part of the discussion because the bylaw is so specific that as long as they don't vote and they only participate to the level that the chair and the body, the committee will allow that person to participate. But they're not a voting member. So I, I can't. I can't get there because there's no, there's no mechanism to get there. So I don't, I don't know if I'm helpful.
I think, I think that answers the question. Julian.
This is a tricky situation because I go back to what Laura said. You know, the intent of the bylaw was, I would believe, to keep did financial discussions clean. You know, a committee comes to them for, for a request, or they do the capital improvement plan or whatever. And that not one member on that committee ha- ha- is invested in a certain project. And in this situation, the person who, well, I mean, the uh, uh, you know, Lisa mentioned that the financial, the financial committee, financial planning committee hasn't even appointed this liaison yet. So maybe, you know, they should go back there and decide whether they want one, but I would, I would say that, you know, it's this, this situation that's presented to us is very complicated. And I would, I think it should be kept clean, no, no liaison and just, um, you know, when it comes to financial planning committee. There's no one who is, who had, is so invested in this project that, um, you know, that all the information will come to everybody at the same time equally.
How would we enact that?
What do you mean?
If, if, for example, we, we wanted to say, um, financial planning committee, you can't send a member to fire station building committee. I'm not suggesting we do that. I think that's not a good idea. How would we do that? Because I'm trying to think of a way that we could do that without directly violating the First Amendment by saying you can't go and participate in meetings.
Are they, they're open meetings? Like anyone could go? Yeah, so we can't, we can't do that. We can't, I mean, if if they want to call themselves a liaison, they can do that, but they're also just a person going to a meeting. And then if they want to report back on their, maybe they have reports in the financial planning committee. And he can report about fire station, like, I don't know. I mean, maybe he's, um, he just thinks it's an interesting project, but I don't think we can tell them not to do that. I think that's above and beyond our pay grade and.
But I don't think that was our intention. Our, it, it's uh, going to a meeting as a citizen versus a liaison to the financial planning committee. I mean, you know, the fire station might say, do you have, it, it happens to me. What do you think the select board is going to, you know, is going to say about that? So.
I think you're right. It will happen. And, you know, that's just the way the cookie crumbles, like, like it's happened to me too at the, at the town hall feasibility study committee. But I am an actual voting member of that committee. I'm not liaison, but still, even though I'm on that committee. Sometimes people will just ask me select board questions or what do we think the select board is going to do and that kind of thing and and it is, it, it's very uncomfortable. But I mean, I don't know. If you guys could tell them not to do that to me, that would be great, but I don't think you can, you know? And I am on that committee like, and he's not even on the committee anymore. So.
I don't know. I think if he goes as a general, a general population, when it's a public meeting, there's no problem because he's part of the public.
But, but liaison means nothing.
Well.
Liaison has no legal definition. It's not something that our bylaw says you get X. Um, it's i- i- it is on the assumption that the financial planning committee decides that they want to send that person. It's that person going to the meeting. And that's all it is. And then it's up to the chair and that committee to decide how they want to deal with that particular member of the public. Uh, it's really nothing else. I mean, again, we are all liaisons to a large number of committees. I don't know, eight or 10 of us apiece. And also that is, it's not, it doesn't mean anything. It means we are being, we are going to the, some of those meetings to report back to us on the select board. And we'll do that in reports in a couple of minutes, um, as to what we do. I don't think we can limit anything otherwise or say you can't use that title because the title means nothing.
Well, I don't agree with that. I think the title means something. We, as liaisons of our group, that we each have like about nine different groups, we try to go. We are given some deference. We are given the opportunity to speak, uh, a little bit differently than in the public.
It, it varies dramatically by the, by the committee. I mean, I, I attend school committee meetings as the, as our liaison to the KDA school committee. I just sit in the audience and I am not given any authority, any power, and I don't speak up at any time other than public comment. Um, but I also am the liaison to the council on aging and the council on aging invites me up to the table and asked me to participate, almost like any other member. Obviously I don't have a vote. It's up, it's up to that committee to, to determine that as it would be anywhere else. I'm, I'm very concerned with us considering taking a practice of formally preventing someone from participating in a way that does not impact this board.
That, that does not impact the select board or the?
Correct. The select board. Or, or anything under us.
And just to clarify, I'm not trying to take away his right to attend and participate. It's the title that I find is it's not, it, I just, it's I don't, I don't even know the right wording. It just doesn't seem appropriate.
It doesn't seem in the spirit of the, of the bylaw. That anyone on financial planning committee is not to serve on anything else. And, and when you start creating these liaison positions when, which may or may not have, have stature at the committee, it, um, it, it muddies the water and you, you know, if, if we want to change the bylaw, that, that's.
I will, I will, I will give you a counter to that. Under our bylaws, it is illegal for a member of the select board to also be on the planning board or on the school committee. We have liaison. We are liaisons to those. So in theory, but by what you're saying, it's violating the spirit of that bylaw for us to be liaisons to the planning board of the school committee.
No, because it says specifically financial planning.
No, there, there is a by, there is a separate bylaw that, that explicitly prohibits someone on being a more than one elected board.
Well, maybe we're doing it wrong.
I don't think so.
Good point.
Lazy Kristen votes for the select board to not have any liaison.
Oh, you could say that before, two months before you're done.
Yeah, let's, let's put it up to a vote for board vote.
Um, I, you know, I mean, separate from that, I don't mind. I think it would, wouldn't be a bad idea for us to have a conversation at some point, probably after the election, nothing personal, Kristen. About, about the, defining the liaison thing a little bit more as far as the, the select board liaisons. I do have one hand up from the audience. Um, does anyone else want to say anything at this point before we, um, recognize that person?
Yeah.
Okay, um, Scott Rogers, if you could unmute, identify yourself and let us know what's on your mind, please.
Yeah, hi, Scott Rogers, twenty-sixth Tomahawk Drive. Currently the liaison from the appropriations committee to the select board.
I didn't realize you had such a thing. Okay.
Thank you for the chair for knowing how to and when to allow comments and how that person interacts. You, you guys aren't doing it wrong currently. You, you want to promote communication between boards, committees and commissions. I don't know what the specific personal, uh, uh, attacks are, uh, to one gentleman on another board, committee or commission, but just people can go to meetings. I go to all your meetings and you'll tell me when I can talk and when I can't talk and it's not a problem. Uh, it, this is like a non-issue that has been, or not an issue and it's been brought up and you've spent a bunch of time talking to it and I don't think there's anything to be done.
Thanks, Scott. Laura.
I apologize if anything that I've said seemed like it was negative towards our volunteers. It a hundred percent was not. It was just understanding how our charters and bylaws work and why these processes are in place. So I'd like your idea Mitch to revisit this and to understand more, but this whole process. I am the liaison for the financial planning committee and I don't remember in the meetings that I have attended or the videos that I've watched that I ever saw a discussion on this. And so I just, in the spirit of transparency and understanding, that was my only intent here and it was not an attack on any person in particular. The fire station is under a lot of scrutiny. There's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of concern around the amount of money that it came in on. And I just feel that pressure that we have to do our very best to make sure that we are following, you know, what the town expects us to do. And again, I'm sorry if anybody thought that it was personal. It wasn't. It was just understanding the charter and the projects that we are currently undertaking. So thank you.
Okay, Laura, anybody have anything else? Lisa.
I have to echo what Laura is saying that bringing this up for discussion was not meant as any personal attack whatsoever. Was a discussion that I felt that the board had, um, they should be able to discuss and talk about it and express how they feel. So we've had that expression. I think that's the whole point of bringing it forward to have something, um, as an agenda item so that the board as a whole can talk about something. And there certainly was never any intention to make a personal attack. So if that's the case and people feel that way, then I too would apologize for the miss, uh, misunderstanding of that.
Anybody have anything else? Julia.
Well, I, you know, I echo the, uh, my, my fellow so- select board members who, um, who explained that this has nothing to do with, with a, an individual personally. And I just have to go back to why was that bylaw written so specifically about the financial planning committee? And, you know, let's think about that.
Is there any formal action that you're asking for tonight, Lisa?
Would we like for financial planning committee to discuss this?
I, I mean, we, we have no direct authority over the financial planning committee, but, uh, it probably isn't a bad idea for them to decide, do they want a liaison, if you want to use that word, if they want to use that word, if not, they can make up something else to the fire station building committee. I mean, that's, that is reasonable for them as a committee to make that decision.
And if they, if they have liaison to one committee though, then should they have liaisons to other building committees too? Should they consider that?
I, I think it makes some sense for them to have that. We, we use liaison in, in this government um, for paying attention. We, a member of one committee paying attention to another and reporting back. I think it isn't a bad idea for the financial planning committee who are, um, the long, long-term capital planning committee, really, um, to pay attention to large capital projects as they are in the planning phase. I don't know about the execution phase, but certainly in advance of town meeting appropriation. It makes sense for them to pay close attention to those projects because they are more than any other individual committee solely responsible for, um, reviewing the financial needs. And, um, I, I think it's a good idea for them to pay attention how they want to call that process. Uh, I personally don't want us to get involved in the nomenclature of how they do that.
Well, it has to be, it has to be consistent with the bylaw though.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, the bylaws, as Tim said, says you can't be a member. What they call themselves, um, you know, i- is, is irrelevant as long as they are not a voting member of any other committee. That's what the bylaw prohibits. And, and I, I really worry that us stepping in further and defining the role of how you can speak and participate is a slippery slope into First Amendment issues that boards do get in trouble for.
Yeah, no one. Go ahead, Lisa.
I don't think anybody is saying that we, we don't want anybody to go in, participate as a public, uh, public hearing. Public is public. It doesn't matter who it is, but to do special, special, uh, is what we're trying to do here is a special, uh, hmm, discussion on it. It's special. I don't know. I just think that it's, uh, it's, it is, it's a very slippery slope going either way. But if it's very specific and it's very much written in a very, this is what the bylaw says, then I think we should honor the, the spirit of the bylaw. So.
Do we, do we want to ask counsel to opine back as far as whether a financial planning committee member can be a liaison to any other board?
Hmm, that's not a bad idea.
Okay.
Good. Okay, Tim, if you could, uh, ask counsel that question and get back to us. Let's satisfy and conclude the, uh, the conversation for now.
Thank you.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Um, that ends that item. Next up, we have reports. Uh, let's see, Laura, any reports tonight?
I have a couple of quick ones. Uh, first, I want to thank all of our, um, election workers who participated in the state primary ballot recount on Thursday. If anyone wants to review the results, they're posted on the website. I'd like to congratulate Mary Ellen Dugget, Duggan, the district wellness coordinator and nurse who was awarded the school nurse administrator of the year award at the Massachusetts School Nurses Organization on March sixteenth. Um, I wanted to just recognize the Northborough Junior Women's Club who on Saturday hosted an amazing STEM day for girls in grades five through eight. They had two hundred and twenty attendees and they had uh, so many amazing programs that the girls could participate. And then there was a keynote speaker who was the first woman commander of the USS Constitution. And that is all I've got to report today.
Thanks, Laura. Lisa, any reports tonight?
Um, just a few light ones, actually. Um, first off, I don't know if I said this last year, last week or not, or the week before. But I did want to thank all the new members of the, uh, finance and appropriations committee. We got quite a few people new on, um, finance was five new appropriations was one new. And I think that's great to have the, the. new blood coming in and filling up those seats because the finance, financial planning was short by a couple of people for several years. Um, I want to thank Jason Little for coming back. I don't think we could have managed as quickly and as easily as we have without him. I think he's a certainly a a good asset for us. Um I got a few residents who was who have asked me a few questions that I wanted to bring to the board. Um, one was um to possibly have a um uh not a trial run, but um um a pre-artikel discussion at the Senior Center um where the seniors or anybody else would like to come that could ask some of the questions that we have for this warrant, because it is so long and and it is difficult for people to um to absorb it, just sitting down in the seat for the first time. Um, and um and then further use the clickers as a a trial run on the clickers, um so we could have like a little mock session. I I talked with Kendra um to see if it was available for us to do that, and she said that uh we could certainly work together to figure something out if this was something that uh we'd like to do for the uh for the residents. I think it's a great idea, especially for that community. Um, they're the they're primarily a lot of voters that go to the Senior Center, and I think that they might um they might enjoy that, and certainly was um proposed to me by a senior. Um Another one, well, another one asked about going to use the electronic voting, um and I guess for all the articles um wasn't sure that that was going to be what was happening. Um, I know myself that I think it's going to be a little crazy to see a paper card here and a clicker here to use in different times. I think the reason we asked for clickers was to have it all uniform and have it go smoothly and quickly, and we certainly paid for that. So that's something that that was raised um by another senior resident. And um and then another resident um informed me of a special projects tax impact calculator that um the in this case, the um the town of Cohasset and Kingham use, and it's part of their um software program that um they're um they're just standard, maybe Laura can help me out on this because I remember asking her about it. Um, it's part of the the same uh company that we use for our um our um
Venus?
T for our IT.
Is the website hosting? Sorry to interrupt, Lisa. The website is hosted by a company that is familiar with government websites, and it looks like they've got some different tools that you can embed in your website. And this tax calculator, I believe, is one of the functions of that platform.
And and what it did was, and I I'd really, I'd, you know, recommend anybody going to check it out. It was amazing because you just go to the Cohasset website, just like ours, and there's a line that says special tax project impacts, and you click on that, and it then shows a street. Um, you put in your street name and number, and then it comes up with all of the um items that are on the town meeting uh warrant in their values and how it affects you um personally. How how much all of this is going to cost you in terms of your taxes um as a whole? And I it's it's amazing to see it. I don't know how hard it is to to put it together or what what it takes, but clearly, a few towns have done it, and it is pretty remarkable, and I think that might be a a little um, you know, a kind of a heads-up thing. Um, I know I sent the information this afternoon to um to Tim and Jason to see if they could um see any, I don't even know if you got to to go forward with the link because I wasn't sure if the link was was working. But I I just think it was a wonderful, um, it's a wonderful option for people to have because so many people don't understand their tax impacts and and how it affects them. So um I'd really like that to be something we might look into. And then um we didn't see anything on the on the uh agenda tonight to talk specifically to what was going on with the police station painting project. Is that just not coming before us now, Tim?
No, it's in the warrant. Uh, I explained it via memo and I um I guess I'm assuming I'm covering that in more detail if needed on the uh first.
Okay, so do you want to wait till then to talk about it, or I just I just Julianne and I and uh one of the members of the Design Review Committee, um along with uh Chief Griffin and um Scott Chappertier walked around the police station last um last week on the fourteenth uh to look at it and see what the building actually looked like. And um didn't notice that it was in such bad condition that we would now have to spend five hundred and forty thousand dollars uh on what was last year a seventy thousand dollar painting project. So I think we need to talk about it, and I think we need to even talk about the breakdown of uh costs, like right now, just in a labor cost of what was it, one hundred and eleven thousand dollars um just to take off the siding, put, take off what's there, put on new siding to the whole building. Um I just think it's an excessive amount of money. If for that kind of money, why can't we hire somebody on a uh a part-time uh special projects to go into our uh um our payroll and and have them here for a short amount of time to do the work as opposed to paying that kind of money just for labor. I think that we need to, we need to be a little bit more creative with the tax dollar, and I don't think this project at five hundred and forty thousand dollars is it. So I'd like to get more discussion on that and from other members of the board as well.
Yeah, I think it would be appropriate um as part of uh preparing, you know, a final review over the town meeting warrant to review and discuss uh items that have changed since our since our last review, and this certainly jumps to the top of that list.
So could we do that next week, then?
I think we should.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it needs to be an agenda item. I think, you know, and under um, you know, reviewing and considering to close, really executing with no choice. The uh to the town meeting warrant, just like you did tonight, Tim, of going through the um, you know, high level of the budget and asking some questions is go through articles that may have changed since uh our prior review of that back a few weeks ago.
Yep, happy to happy that it was ready for tonight. You can do it next week, too.
Well, that ends my report, then. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lisa. Kristen, any reports tonight?
Just a couple of quick things. Um so, speaking of awards for um awesome women in this town, Kristen Black um will be receiving the Migrant Champion of the Year Award at the Central Mass Housing Alliance Annual Meeting on this Wednesday, March twenty-seventh. Um, also, on March twenty-seventh, there is um, we are having our Town Hall Feasibility Study Committee um meeting, and we'll be voting to recommend to this board um which building to that that committee thinks should be uh the one they move forward for plans for a new town hall. Um, and we did get some financials last Friday on that, the committee did, so um, it has cost estimates. It doesn't have estimates for the sale of any of the buildings, but the cost estimates are very good and detailed and helpful. Um, and then it is not too late to donate to the Scholarship Committee. FYI, that's ends my report. Thanks.
Thanks, Kristen. Julianne, any reports tonight?
Um, well, I I wanted to ask Kristen, actually, um, I should the liaison to Community Affairs.
Oh, yes, I am, but I didn't, I usually um I stopped going to their meetings because they're one of the committees that you just sit there like a bump on a log and you don't get to really say anything. So I just started texting their chair, Suzie, or emailing her. Like, what do you want me to say? And I didn't get around to it this this time for this meeting. But I know they're working on the bands for the summer, and there was supposed to be one that Mitch was going to be really happy about. I did see that email.
That would be uh Playing Dead, a uh excellent Grateful Dead cover band that has played a number of years past.
Ah.
Very happy to see that.
They have four, I think they have four bands picked out.
Well, before we have the bands, we have to clean up town.
Yes, that's another thing. They're doing that, too. Yeah, so, yeah.
And I I I believe the date is April twenty-seventh. The usual procedure, you know, you can get your bags beforehand or show up that Saturday morning, um, seven fifteen. And there will be, I think, other tables, like the Garden Club has been asked to have a table for information and um, any handouts that that the Garden Club has, so um pencil that in on your calendars to be confirmed at a later date. And also, the Northborough Sustainable Committee is, I want to remind people about the walk that they're sponsoring on April sixth, which is a Saturday, um, to, you will go on a hike with um someone from, I think it's DRC to identify invasive plants in the in the in the forest. And so that will meet at the Rice Avenue Trailhead at ten AM. And then if you would like to stay on, the Junior Women's Club is going to have a work party afterwards to um you you know, to remove some of the invasives that that were identified. And um I just want to say one more more thi- one more thing. Master Plan Implementation Committee is you know, we meet every month, and at our last meeting, if people want to watch the first part of it, Jean Kay Helled gave a summary of when Oars, which is the organization that monitors the Assabette River throughout Massachusetts. Um, she gave a great summary. It's about fifteen minutes or so about the dams that we have in town and the the information about removing removal of dams, which is a a a a project that the state is really um supporting because the dams are apparently what are blocking up the river and allowing all that vegetation to grow. So watch that if you're interested. Um uh, and that ends my report.
Thank you, Julianne. Um, I've got a couple of things. Um, at our last regular meeting, we had talked about tonight's meeting being our first hybrid meeting. Obviously, that didn't occur, but I want to really thank Dana and the Cable Department and the IT Department and everyone else in Town Hall who has been working on that project. It um, there, I I think there were just a few IT-related issues that uh need to get sorted out before we can have that. Um, I'm very much looking forward to being in person with as many of you as possible um for future meetings, but still be able to connect with um with staff members and members of the public remotely. So um hopefully sometime within the next couple of meetings, we will be able to do that. Um, uh we will be talking soon about aggregation again. Um, the uh public comment period closed recently for the public to provide us insight into what people want to do, different plans and other input into the aggregation process that will be um distributed out to the board and uh and then we'll have the opportunity of um of making any changes or saying, you know what, this plan is good. I haven't seen any of that comment yet, so uh I don't have any guesses as to what that might be, but I'm looking forward to that. And then that can be submitted um to the state to begin the waiting process, which luckily is not as long as it used to be. Um, and last, um, back, I think it was when we had our Goals Meeting in August. One of the items we discussed a little bit was the possibility of having a um sort of a student representative from Algonquin uh participate in our meetings. And from what I remember, the board was very intrigued at that idea. Um, I thought about that very recently as we're getting a little bit close towards the end of school year, thinking, gee, we should really choose. We should really not, we we wouldn't choose, but if we still wanted to do that, we should invite the school department to name someone um who might be a junior this year, senior next year um to start coming to our meetings. And um and we can sort out the details of participation and so forth later. So thinking about how that might work, I reached out to the Guidance Department at Algonquin, and uh they seemed very excited about that idea. And um I was told a little bit about how that selection process might work. I don't think we should be involved in that selection process. Um, but the guidance, all the guidance staff would get together and think about who might be a good person. They would talk to that student. They would probably talk to the parents uh and um and then give us a name. Um, I provided a little bit of outline. You know, we meet in the second and fourth Monday at seven o'clock, et cetera, so that the person would know to be available. The person you know, would um, you know, would be eh sort of a seat at the table, if you will, not to bring up the liaison thing again, but you know, a little bit like that and couldn't resist. Uh, and uh but would not have a vote on anything and would not participate in any executive sessions. Um, but I think it would provide us some insight from a different vantage point than any of us, and it would provide particularly that person some really interesting experience in what we love is local government. So um I want to make sure that uh everyone else is still on board with the concept, and if so, I will uh I will ask the school department to um to give us a name in the near future.
I'm on board.
I love that idea. Yep, it's great.
Excellent. Good, thank you. And that
To that, to to add to that, um, I know, I was told that in Plymouth, when the first year they started electronic voting that um they had a group of high school students just kind of a around if people had difficulty with their clickers or whatever. Um, time is getting short. It town meeting is coming up very soon, but uh I wonder if we should be thinking about doing that, something similar.
Yeah, I mean, it's more of a more of an Andy and Fred uh question, but that makes some sense. I like I like the idea. Um I would say, Tim or Diane, that could be something else you could speak to Andy about and see if we can um, you you know, how, what what it, what he anticipates being the issue um of making sure we get full participation and no confusion at town meeting. I know um I'm sure they're thinking about that and the, you know, we'll have an employee from that company at town meeting to help with technical issues. It's not not a bad idea. Okay, um, with that, we are done with board reports. Uh, Tim, any reports tonight?
Uh, no, due to the latest of the hour, I don't have anything to add.
Diane, any reports tonight?
I do not have anything. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Reports are concluded. Um, does anyone else have anything else that we need to discuss this evening? Julianne.
I I really like this idea of um of a presentation or discussion of the of the warrant and the the kind of trial run of electronic voting at the Senior Center. Is there any way we can make sure that that happens? If Kendra's already on board and has, thinks she has time, how do we make that happen?
Yeah, that would be working with Andy and his availability. Um, I don't even know if the equipment is in yet.
It is, it's not here, but we we can, we'll try to make it work. I, it's just time. Time is convenient for them and time convenient for staff and get the clickers in, so if nothing else, if it's not the clickers, it should be to review the warrant articles with the public. That'd be a good job.
Right. A- and will April first possibly be in a hybrid meeting?
It's certainly fine with me. Um, I I'm at this point deferring to uh Dana from North Row Cable on when he tells us the equipment is fully ready for use. So as soon as he gives us the go-ahead, as far as I'm concerned, our next meeting will be hybrid. That's all I know. Um, anybody have anything else? With that, we will uh have one more public comment period. If there's any member of the electronic public that wishes to uh speak up and uh say what's what is on your mind about North Row Government, raise your hand. Not seeing any hands up. Going once. Going twice. Public comment is closed, and there being nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen, to adjourn. All those in favor, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are adjourned. I also vote aye. Vote is unanimous in favor. We are adjourned, ten forty-three PM. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Good night.